The September 22 regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education is called to order. I'm the Chair Christine Vitale.
Can't really hear you.
Can't really hear me? We'll try this again. Can you hear me now? Third time's the charm, hopefully. Welcome. This is the September 22 regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education. We are joined tonight by Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Pitko, Mrs. Gerber, Superintendent Cummings, Mr. Asa, Ms. Maxine Cannelly, Mr. Peterson, and Ms. Lieper. I ask you to all please rise for the pledge and stand for a moment of silence to honor Thank you all. Welcome, everybody. It's nice to see you all. We have a full agenda and a lot to talk about tonight, so we will get right to it. Public comment. Once again, the public is not able to join us here in person due to the Governor's executive orders limiting the amount of people that can be indoors. Public comment can be submitted through the public comment email, which is publiccomment@fairfieldschools.org, as well as the public comment forum that is posted with the board agenda. We did receive a few public comments already. They will be posted with the minutes of this meeting on the district website. We have no old business for new business. First reading, adopting the flexibilities for implementing the Connecticut Guidelines for Educator Evaluation 2017. Mr. Cummings, I don't know if you have any initial remarks or...
Just real quick. Good evening, everyone. Mike Cummings, Superintendent. Doctors Havichankic is going to come up and talk tonight about this teacher evaluation process and some of the changes that have been put in place by the state of Connecticut. He met last week with our professional development committee to review those changes, and from them, tonight he brings forward a proposal for your consideration and for questions tonight.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for your time in presenting the teacher evaluation and administrator flexibilities for 2020-2021. In your board packet, there are a number of documents that will provide context for the reason for the flexibilities and what they look like, including the Governor's executive orders and Commissioner Cardona's flexibility newsletters and guidance documents that came out in both August and September. We went into this year wondering about what this would look like for teachers, knowing that teacher evaluation and performance evaluation and professional development would look quite different during the 2020-2021 school year, seeing how schools look different and we're in a hybrid fashion, and how would we evaluate teachers on that. Thank you. Sorry about that. I had my clicker, but I lost it. I apologize. I knew I put it somewhere. I just couldn't figure out where. And I might be out of range, so if you don't mind advancing, that would be great. Sounds good. So, the timeline that occurred, as you remember, last March, the Governor issued an executive order allowing the Commissioner to make flexibilities to the teacher evaluation plan, and that order gave him the right to impose it on districts and for districts to adopt it moving forward. In August, middle of August, and then following that in early September, and we are still waiting for some additional communication in September regarding the Commissioner's flexibilities. But he has outlined with the State Department of Education what those would look like and what the characteristics of that are, which I'll go through momentarily. Also, last week, I and a bunch of my colleagues met with our professional development and evaluation committee. They call it the PDEC Committee. It meets regularly, always has met regularly, and they reviewed the flexibilities and agreed with them. If you could go to the next slide. The flexibilities take on three important roles for 2020-2021, and it's important to say that these flexibilities end their sunset at the end of the year. So, this isn't an adoption of a plan that will continue on. This is a one-year flexibility that is granted to local education associations and boards of ed, and they take on three primary roles, particularly that middle one, a focus and a prioritization on student engagement, family engagement, reopening of schools, and social emotional learning, which we've heard a lot about in the reopening plan, and we really like that the state has given us some guidance on this to say that teachers can be evaluated and goals can be written as a result of these three priorities as well. They do, it does maintain in the teacher evaluation plan meaningful feedback, written meaningful feedback to teachers and administrators when they're observed in their practice and in their goal-setting stages. And again, they are saying, or they're committing, I should say, the State Department of Education is committing to revising and redoing teacher evaluation for 2021-2022. And again, these are one-year flexibilities moving forward. Our current system, and this has not changed, this is the composition of how teachers and administrators are evaluated throughout the state and in Fairfield. Student learning outcomes talk specifically about student learning goals. In the past, these were things that looked like math performance, language arts performance, maybe a specific department had a goal based on their academic content, and that was worth or comprised 45% of the teacher's evaluation. Administrators and teachers had a 40% observation of practice goal. These were the classroom observations, whether those be formal or informal, and that was written within each department's or each district's plan. There's a 10 and a 5% stakeholder feedback, which generally related to the survey that was given in the spring, and it was given every other year. And then there was a whole-school learning goal, which was directly related to the principal's goals, pretty much saying that everybody has a stake in both the culture of the school and the learning of the school, and that was 5%. It would total 100% in the end, and that essentially has not changed with the flexibilities. There are no changes in any of these things you see on the screen right now, including that teachers would need to goal-set in the beginning of the year on those three priority areas, along with reopening of schools. There would still be a mid- and an end-of-year conference. There would still be professional learning needs that the PDEC Committee would have to involve themselves in throughout the year, and there would still be teacher self-assessment along the way to see where those professional learning needs need to be and how the district can support them. So, that all remains the same in the flexibilities. Where there's some changes are in the administrator and teacher-student learning outcomes. This was at 45%, and this is what they are. So, I'm going to start with the teachers, which is at the bottom. The administrators is fairly similar as well. The state is allowing in their flexibilities for teachers to write one goal of accomplishment with, excuse me, one goal, one student learning outcome goal with two indicators of accomplishment, and that those be focused on social-emotional learning, family engagement, and student engagement. And they are, they haven't submitted them yet, but they are sending us in all the districts what some model goals would look like. You can still have an academic goal. It has to be agreed upon with the administrator and the teacher individually. That's why it's not up there. Same thing for administrators, two indicators or measures of accomplishment. The only difference there is that they can also focus on the reopening of schools, supporting remote and hybrid instruction, mastery-based learning, for example, as well as the safety and well-being and health of students, staff, and families. So, that is markedly different than what we've done in the past with, for example, a math goal from the beginning assessment to the end assessment in May. In terms of the performance and observation feedback, this was the 40% in the two slides prior. For administrators, this would go to two or three site visits, as well as two reviews of artifacts. And for teachers, this would be two or three informal observations that must be given with written feedback to the teacher and one review of practice. The reason it says two or three, it depends on where you are in your stage of career. If you are three years, less than three years of service, it would be three observations. If you are more, it would be two. And then there's some other guidelines in regards to whether, you know, what your rating was the year before. Was it accomplished or exemplary, or was it not meeting standards, which might allow you to have three observations versus two. With that being said, administrators can continue to observe more than what these standards were given for as well. Whole-school learning remains the same as the previous submitted district plan. In stakeholder feedback, the percentage obviously remains the same, but they're asking for a prioritization on strategies for communications with families and engagement with families, especially now that many of us are seeing ourselves in either remote or hybrid scenarios across the state. But the percentages essentially remain the same. The other areas that are changes for this year are summative ratings. They are waived for the 2021 school year if the flexibilities are adopted. So, at the end of each year, when the student learning outcomes and the observations of performance and the whole-school learning come together, teachers are usually given one final rating on a matrix of, say, for example, proficiency or exemplary or below proficiency. That would be waived in this school year with those, with those flexibilities. Educators will continue to receive written feedback and goal feedback, and if anybody was or needs to be on an improvement or remediation plan, those would continue or the administrator would engage in them. So, those things don't go away. With the flexibilities, they actually continue, and administrators have that right to continue doing that as well. So, those are the flexibilities that were allowed to follow 2020-2021. They do have to be adopted, all of them, at once. We can't pick and choose which ones we want. So, those are what they are. So, I'll open it up to any questions that the board may have about the plan.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Ms. Lieper?
Thank you for walking us through this, Dr. Zavajansik. Did I get it right?
You got it right.
Yes. I'm not sure if you will be the correct person to answer this, or Mr. Cummings, but what actually is more flexible about this plan in terms of how laborious it is on administrators? Because it seems like what is time-consuming, and we did this evaluation three years ago of this being the most costly unfunded mandate on our district, and I did some calculations that it could be anywhere from $650,000 to $800,000 a year in administrator hours. And it seems like this is just as many hours. Is that, is that accurate?
So, I haven't looked at it in terms of hours, so I can't answer that question. I will say, one of the things that is attractive about the plan is that it's aligning directly with what we're expecting for 2020-2021 in terms of social-emotional learning, engaging families, keeping them engaged, and also looking at practice, both in hybrid and remote scenarios, which wasn't in the past, and looking at artifacts. So, the observation cycle typically is pre-observation, observation, post-observation. Most of the observations are informal at this point, so they could be done, for example, on Google Classroom or during a Google Meet, as well as in the classroom when teaching is happening as well. But we do feel that they're more directly aligned with our goals for 2020-2021.
Is there, and can I, can I, I have a couple of questions about this. Is there anything in this plan, and I appreciate that it's aligned to our social and emotional learning goals, that serves like as an instrument to move teacher practice?
So, the rubrics did not go away. So, the district signed into the Marzano rubrics, and those continue to be our function of what good teaching looks like, and we would expect ourselves and our administrators and our teachers to look at those as self-assessments of what good practice is and to get feedback on those as well.
Is that something that doesn't already happen inside of PD?
The observation piece or the rubric piece?
I guess the rubric piece.
So, professional development spans a lot of areas, including the instructional focus. A lot of the PD this year was on social-emotional learning and re-engagement of families that wouldn't necessarily be listed as a criteria on, for example, the instructional framework of the rubric. So, yes, it happens, but it doesn't happen directly as aligned as it would.
I only asked too many questions because I sort of remember when we talked about teacher eval a few years ago, and of course, this is, predates you. It was a very time-consuming endeavor for the district, and at that time anyways, the district didn't seem to feel, administration didn't seem to feel like it really moved teacher practice commensurate with how laborious it is. So, I'm wondering if we have an opportunity to provide feedback to the State Department of Ed for their new teacher eval plan you mentioned for 21-22.
I don't have an answer for that. That was a commitment they made, that they would revision it this year in the interim when the flexibilities are available. I'd imagine they would seek feedback from multiple stakeholder groups, but that, as far as I know, that process has not begun yet.
Anything else, Ms. Lieper?
I'd just like to comment on that because going back to the period of time you referenced, the concern we have with the teacher evaluation process then, in some ways, really, it does Given the number of staff that any one administrator has to evaluate in a year, it doesn't align with what we know about what quality feedback, what's needed for quality feedback, which is sometimes less is more. The ability to take, first of all, the ability to truly engage with administrators in aligning practices and expectations along a strong rubric, and continuing to develop administrator understanding of what that practice actually looks like. And quite honestly, the best work around that is not dependent on a rubric that you, and I don't, I don't mean to be dismissive, but that you essentially get off of a shelf, but the best work is based on a rubric that you would actually build in-house with your And then, not trying to do every teacher every year, but having an intake process, and then certain teachers having other opportunities, you know, like a cyclical approach, and then in the off-years of teacher observation, allowing teachers professional growth opportunities, particularly ones that would be collaborative in nature. And I think, and then that would promote teachers' own interest in areas of study. There's a lot that could be done. I think that this, this plan, as Mr. Dr. Havichankic speaks to, at least aligns to the social-emotional focus that the state is, are pursuing this year rightfully. But of course, the worry that we have is that it's coming, it's coming now, and we haven't really had time to train our administrators to effectively, never mind help the teachers through this process. So, we've got to be careful that a year of a lot of new things, we ground this in as much as possible to what teachers are used to in order to help bring them forward in a safe place, because the first place we have to start with the social-emotional is their own place around this, so that they can support the students and families.
Thank you for that.
Anything else, Jen? Ms. Pitko?
I was wondering if you could just give me some examples under the administrator observation of practice, like what would be two artifacts to review?
So, are, all of our administrators create school improvement plans, for example, and that might be part of their goal-setting and an artifact to look at how that's implemented along the way and what the results of it may have been. For example, at the beginning of the year, what they set their goals for and how they're going to achieve them, followed by where they are in the middle of the year. And they might have specific artifacts of how they're achieving their goals in terms of communications with families, for example. They may have started a website or have a weekly newsletter that focuses on hybrid learning or remote learning that they would walk through with their evaluator throughout the year.
So, is anywhere in their evaluation plans a push for their own professional learning? So, for instance, the last three districts I've worked in, instead, we had student learning objectives. Instead of observation of practice, we had professional learning objectives, and that was incorporated into your observation. So, whatever you were seeking out outside of what the district was teaching you, whether it was, you know, culturally appropriate, or you then put that into your lessons, and those were the ones they observed.
I think that's included in these plans as well, both for the teachers and the administrators. For example, as a classroom observation, an administrator might, and a teacher might reflect upon it and say that there's a need here for formative assessment, for example, and that may become part of their professional learning goals. It might also be included at the self-assessment stage in the beginning of the year, where a teacher says, "I really want to focus on this particular area that I feel I can do better in or that my students need this year." And that could be written into their goal-setting and goal-planning as well. But those are all individual conversations that happen between teacher evaluator and administrator evaluator that would have to, have to take place versus a cookie-cutter approach to saying, "Everybody needs this," or "Everybody needs that."
Ms. Jacobson?
Hi, Jen Jacobson. I just have a quick question. The goals. Could you just share a little bit more with us and maybe anyone who might be listening as to the rationale of supplanting these new areas of focus with academic goals? I'm thinking in particular, these are all, I'm not undervaluing what is in here right now, but why were academic goals taken out of this evaluation?
So, there is still an option to do an academic goal, so it wasn't fully taken out. The focus was put more on the engagement piece. The academic pieces of school still remain. The difference is that counting the numbers from the fall to the spring isn't necessarily the focus of the teacher. They're obviously still teaching math in the curriculum and language arts, but we also want them to integrate this engagement piece and this focus on social-emotional learning in addition to how that works with simply looking at a test score and saying that you're expecting growth at the, you know, from the 50th to the 70th percentile, for example. So, I wouldn't say that they were necessarily supplanted and taken out. There's still obviously going to be a focus when evaluators do classroom observations, but the mechanics of looking at that from fall to spring is, we want the, we want the focus of educators to be on students' engagement in school, especially in our hybrid plan, for example, moving forward, that kids are connected to their teacher and their peers and the content.
So, when you're saying engagement, are you, are you using, I just want to make sure we have the same language going on, because this word engagement is used an awful lot. Are you referring to the state guidance, so to speak, document around engagement with time and those types of things? Is that what you mean by that?
Yeah. It's a measure of accomplishment, so there's not necessarily a assessment that could be given to determine engagement, so to say. But yeah, it's not necessarily time either. They gave me a few examples at the state level when I called about this, and it could be things around engaging families, for example, in communication techniques around a child's learning versus, versus, again, looking at a number on a survey, how a parent responded. So, a teacher may have a communication plan that they want to accomplish to engage their families with their classroom that they're using is their goal, or one of the indicators of their goal, I should say.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that a little bit better. And just one last question. I know that the state has provided this ability to adopt these flexibilities for teaching and changing the goals, but is the state assessing our kids at the end of this year on the state exams?
At the current point, they have, they are, yes.
Are they still implementing the school-wide district accountability system based on their, large part on those results?
I would say that's still to come. I haven't heard about it yet. Much of the K-8 accountability plan is based on growth from one year to the next, and seeing that we've, didn't have a assessment last year, I'm not sure how they would determine that. So, I don't really have the information to provide on that, but I would think they'd have to reimagine it if they're going to.
Thanks so much.
Any other questions? Mrs. Maxine Cannelly?
Thank you. So, a few questions. First, I just want to take a step back in terms of the process of this, and correct me if my memory is off, because we've come at this a few times. But let me start by asking, for these changes that you're bringing before us for a vote, is this basically exactly what the state's plan was, or did the Fairfield Committee do anything that Fairfielded these?
These are the, this is the state plan, taken directly from their documents. They do not provide flexibility to change it from the state level to us.
So, this is a mandate as opposed to an option?
If you were to accept it, yes.
So, it is an option?
The other option would be to continue the plan as currently submitted.
Or a third option, which is, if I'm correct, if this board did not like this and wanted to tweak it in, you know, in any direction, we can't make that change, but we can vote this down. It goes back to the Fairfield Committee. The Fairfield considers the input of the board, does or does not change it, and it comes back to us. And if none of that comes to pass, it defaults to the current plan. Am I correct?
It would go to the current plan, yes.
Okay. So, I guess I'm just, just for the sake of the board, this is, in fact, something we have input. We don't have to just accept it if there's something we don't like.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. So, I would do want to get back, because I share many of Mrs. Jacobson's concerns, and I was wondering if you can flesh out more, what is the, I mean, student engagement is one thing, and there's lots of ways to put data points on that, but is the SEL goal engagement, or is there something separate and apart that's considered the SEL aspect of this?
I don't believe there is one SEL component that a teacher would have to implement. The state has committed to a mid-September, which would be right around now, submitting what an SEL goal might look like, look like across the district, and I think it can be a combination of both engagement and SEL, because there's more than one indicator under the goal as well.
So, can you give any examples of things Fairfield would be considering? And maybe at two different levels if, if it comes, something comes to mind?
So, I know, for example, at the elementary level, there is a half-hour every day devoted to social-emotional learning, including morning meeting, and teachers are implementing, implementing a number of strategies there across the district that can be used as indicators of accomplishment, of implementing them with fidelity. I believe the secondary is doing something similar, perhaps with a survey, although I don't want to speak in case, speak out of line in case that's not happening, but there could be a more, an indicator that's more numerical with that as well. But again, it's accomplishment versus growth, which we looked for at the last time. So, it would be that the teachers have completed it and did it, and there's obviously artifacts to look at, and then it would be, it would be completed at that point.
Because I guess what, I would hope to see examples of that. I mean, that, that, when you only have those kids in there for two and a half hours, that is, that's 20% of the time, that 30 minutes. So, if I can request that we get some examples of how that half an hour is spent and therefore what is forming that goal, because, and again, this is absolutely unscientific in its sampling, my sense is happiness to be back. And therefore, you're already on a positive track for SEL, and therefore, my focus shifts very much so to academic, and that is the piece I am extremely concerned about. I think a lot of SEL concerns got addressed by being in the building for the children who wanted to be there. I can definitely see that maybe the Remote Learning Academy would, would have a I can definitely see that maybe the Remote Learning Academy would, would have a different SEL concern, and so I, I would separate those two. But I guess I'm, it's, I, I accepted, as all districts did, the wild, wild west of this spring. I'm not willing to do that anymore, and I'm not willing for our kids or for our staff to have that kind of direction. So I am a little bit disappointed that there is no required academic portion of this. And so I don't know if that's something anyone would be able to speak to, but, because we do, you know, you use phrases such as measure of accomplishment. And what are we accomplishing? I guess is, is, and, and so if, if we could have some examples of that, I know I would appreciate it to know just what exactly it is that we're signing off on as this is our goal.
Can I, can I jump in there, Ms. McAnally? Just, just to give you an example of perhaps what an administrator goal might look around that. I'm recognizing your concerns around the academic, but it was taken with the social emotional piece for a minute and the engagement piece. As a building administrator, as district superintendent, how do we reengage students who begin to disengage, families who begin to disengage? What are the strategies that we employ when students begin to kind of fall off the radar, as it were? And I think that that's something, you know, having a conversation today, this afternoon through email with a couple of the members of the McKinley staff, these are just, these are considerations that we're, got it, we have to be mindful of based on experiences in the spring. Family circumstances often intrude on the best of intentions, so how are we going to support families with that? And I think that that's something that we can start to put a kind of metric against as well. It ultimately leads to academic, but it's the front steps, as it were, to that. So I think that that's one measure that we also have to, to take into mind and consideration that, that I would encourage our administrators to be engaged in at all levels and in all schools.
Thank you for that. And I absolutely think that is a, a top priority, is making sure you don't lose kids that way. But the vast majority of our kids are back, at least in physical person, and so now what are we doing to bring them back is my only concern. I'm just, it's lots of concerns and we just don't know where they are right now. So, and I'm not sure if, I was looking at my notes. Do we have any sense of what the numbers are, school by school, of who stopped signing on? So therefore, we have kind of a starting point of, we know we don't want to go back to that moving forward?
I don't believe we, I'm trying to think, I don't know if Mr. Mancusi has anything, and I don't think we do. I think principals might have less numbers, but families or students that they're concerned about. I know that in conversations with the principals this summer, they were hitting the ground running with certain families that they were concerned about. So that is absolutely on people's radar.
Hello, everybody. Rob Mancusi, Executive Director, Special Education. In terms of numbers of students or families who are unplugged, so to speak, or disengaged, you know, I do hear from families, like on case-by-case basis for students with disabilities that, you know, some students continue to struggle. The re-engagement plan as part of our reopening plan and as a priority of the state's reopening plan is really, and part of the reason why we're doing the, we're going to be doing the universal screen to see the, the degree to which folks were traumatized over this closure, it, it's real. The, the amount of anxiety and disconnectedness that people have experienced is, is real, and it has taken a toll on people. So the idea of the, the re-engagement plan and strengthening the SEL supports is really to get kids reconnected, like in a, in a powerful way, so then, you know, they will be available to learn. And to develop plans and implement strategies individualized to each student and family based on the level of disengagement they experienced during the closure or that they may be getting to experience so far this year.
Okay, thank you. And then just slightly taking a different tact, I think I've made my point about that, and so thank you. But getting to some of the nuts and bolts of this then, obviously, although the rating goes by the wayside, a teacher is still moving in its, in his or her first four years towards the, on the tenure track, correct?
Yes.
And so what is, how does this work as a mechanism for addressing teachers who have already been addressed as below proficient?
All of those pieces of the current plan remain in place in terms of structured assistance or intensive assistance, remediation plans, those do not go away as part of the, part of the flexibility.
And, and this part I actually genuinely don't remember. I know that there are steps, I think it's a couple of year process whereby a below proficient teacher whom, who, whose status does not change, even with tenure, can be moved out of the system. Is that correct?
Are you asking if it takes a couple of years or how the process works?
Correct. The latter.
So yeah, I would imagine if it's performance-based, which I think is what you're referring to, a performance-based issue with a teacher, they would go to a structured assistance plan with their evaluator. There would be clearly outlined steps in that plan of how performance has to improve. There would be indicators within that plan of, that a teacher would have to meet in order to come off the plan, so to say, or move to a higher level in the plan prior to making an employment decision.
And so that's my question then, is that if this rating goes by the wayside, what does it do to that process?
The ratings can still continue to happen with individual lessons. So teachers still get written feedback, teachers still are scored on the rubrics. The rating that, and that does not get reported is the final rating at the state level that we submit for the teachers, but the plans would remain in place if an administrator notices a concern with a teacher.
Okay, thank you. And then just my last question is, I was hoping you can refresh my memory because this I do forget. The final 15%, what do we use for the whole school learning and the stakeholder feedback? I mean, the stakeholder feedback, I can think right now there'd be some really obvious ones to do as district-wide measures if we took a pre and post, but I was wondering what you had in mind for those two?
Well, the, the 10% of that 15% is usually the survey that's given out in the spring. You know, the principals, the leadership teams will identify a particular component of the previous year's survey that's something they want to improve, that's as a pre-measure, and then in the, then in the spring, when that survey is re-administered, they measure the progress against that. And that's usually part of the, the administrator gets the rating, the, the teachers also get the rating.
Did we do that survey?
We didn't do it this spring, but we do do that survey. We have done that survey. I think last time we had a consideration of it, I can remember Dr. Jones and I presenting a revamp of the questions. But we didn't do it last year because we didn't have the staff. Now, one possibility exists is, let me just jump to the 5%, then I'll come back to the survey. The other 5% is been based on the SBA, overall SBA performance at a school or the SAT performance, as it were. And again, that didn't, that clearly didn't happen in the spring, and how that will happen this year, we don't know because as Dr. Zavichance spoke, spoke about it, it's been based on growth formula, and without a 2019 administration, how this is going to look in 2020, we, we still, we haven't had clarity yet around that. But that would be part of the 5% that is essentially is applied uniformly to everybody in the building. One possibility for a survey this year is we are getting ready, we had talked about in the summer administering a survey to our families in September on the beginning of the school year and how remote learning was going, how hybrid learning was going, whatever learning model we ran, how it was going. We are getting ready to see that. I, Ms. Clark shared a, early drafted that with me this afternoon, so we're, we're going to get that out soon. That could be, we could use that almost as a pre and a post this year if we choose to, to see how we measure up and how we progress against those expectations.
That's kind of what I was wondering. So, all right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, moving on to the discussion of reopening schools full-time. The board, just in for the public, when we superintendent announced the model that we opened schools back at the beginning of August, we said that we were going to revisit it by September 25th to possibly make a decision about bringing more students into buildings the first week in October. A survey went out to building administrators. The board has been touring the schools today and last week, and we're at this point, and I'll hand it over to the superintendent now.
Thank you. We're going to have a couple of components tonight of this presentation, but I think we'll start, Mr. Cleary and Ms. Mitchell from the Town Health Department are here. And so if we have questions for them, I'll start with that and then I can do the presentation. So I want to thank them for making, making themselves available this evening for any questions that members of the board might have.
Thank you for joining us, Mr. Cleary. And yes, and you know, as we are touring schools, we're, we're measuring distance between desks and looking at, you know, the way students are walking in the hallway and all of those procedures that were put in place just to make our schools safer. And I know the board has some questions, both about just what the guideline should be, as well as just the overall COVID numbers in the state and in the town, being that that also plays into our decision-making. So I will bring it to the board for any questions. Ms. Fratelli?
Hi, Sam. Thanks for coming tonight. I actually had reached out to you last night and spoke with you earlier. So for the benefit of the public, I'll just go over my questions again that we talked about. So as far as the social distancing guidelines in the school system, it's my understanding that the six feet is a recommendation, not a requirement. Is that correct?
That is correct. It's, they, they say try to maintain six feet where possible.
Right, when feasible, right? Thanks. And then as far as our current numbers, and I thank Dr. Dronko today for going over some of the latest charts and numbers with me. I know that our numbers are not completely updated from the state as far as including the recent surge we may be expecting from our universities. Is that correct?
So the numbers that we see right now, if you, you know, if you go on our website or look at the state data, it, it only goes up to September 12th. So we're not, we're only seeing essentially four days of school experience in those numbers right now. So it's because of the delays and the way the state reports the data, you know, that we're, we're only there right now. And so there's that. And the, because of the issues, and they're all posted on our website, some of the data reporting issues with the universities that we picked up on, and we're starting to correct those, that there's a lag in some of that data getting into the state system that we utilize to calculate total numbers for the town or the state uses to calculate total numbers for the county, which is the, what the, the leading and secondary indicators are based upon.
And when we talked earlier, I was concerned that the numbers that we'll be getting, which I know the town is, I know the town of Fairfield is aware of the numbers coming out of Fairfield University and Sacred Heart, that might not have hit the state yet, but I know that we're aware that there's an increase in numbers. So my question earlier was, will those increase in numbers affect our Fairfield data with our potential of us looking at kids going back to school five days a week? Now, you explained to me, and I appreciate that, that the CDC recommends that we look at state and county data, and we can break it, we, we have it broken down into Fairfield data on, on the website, just, you know, as a comparison, really. But that you believe that the, even when the university numbers hit our Fairfield county data numbers, it will have a minimal impact on our current, our current standing in those categories?
Yeah, I, you know, when you add in the numbers of universities in the county and the number, those populations, and you get down to your, what is your denominator on that, when you factor that all in, that I don't think it will have a significant impact on, you know, it will have some, but not a significant impact on the numbers that we're seeing, you know. You know, again, I think these numbers will change as we get more experience of more days in school, and as we work out data issues, I think they, they will change, they will likely potentially increase. But it's, in terms of looking at it from a state and a county level, I don't think those numbers will have a significant impact for us.
And I know that when I last checked today, our numbers, as far as the school data page that Fairfield has, we sit at about a, I think it was a 4.4 or 4.5, falling in the, in the favors in-person learning category. So my concern was, will the university numbers affect us going into a, you know, moving to hybrid, which we were well, I believe in August, when we had our first discussion on this, we were at a 1.8. So really, our numbers had nowhere to go but up. We were the lowest. I think that was the lowest I've seen. So if we are in the mid-fours and we don't really envision the university numbers affecting it that much, is it safe to say that within the next week or by the time that the state data hits, we will still fall in this category of favors in-person learning?
So I guess, I guess I'm, that's part I'm not clear on, is whether, where, where these numbers will go. So we're, right now, these numbers are reflecting four days of experience. They're not reflecting the impact on, the potential impact of transmission going on because of the changes in what has happened throughout the state, throughout the county. We're, we're still uncertain of exactly how this will impact the community. And so I think there's a, there's a real potential that these numbers will increase, and I'm not sure where they'll go. They, you know, both numbers, both at the state level and the county level are trending up and, and have been for, for a time, that it's still well within the favors in-person learning category across the board with, you know, some, you know, minor exceptions. You know, our positivity rate is not, is, is going up, is not flat or decreasing. So that's, this is a secondary indicator that's kind of going up. For Connecticut, the other two indicators are staying level, and for the county, the other two indicators are going down. So they're all, they're all, those are moving in favorable directions, other than, you know, we are seeing, we are seeing increases in the leading indicator, we are seeing increases in this, in the first of the secondary indicators. But, you know, when we, you know, when we see more experience of, of more data being released, you know, another few weeks of data, of another, another incubation period or two, that then we'll see the true impact of what bringing students back into schools, bringing college, college students back onto campuses, what impact that has on the state and the community.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Pico?
Thank you for coming. I have a couple of questions, kind of to piggyback on what she's been asking. Do we know if there has been an increase in numbers outside of the university students in Fairfield? Is there any way to like determine that data?
Yes, yeah, we can, we can look at that. We have that numbers. It's not necessarily calculated the exactly same way as in the school metrics page, but you can see on our, our data charts here. We've looked at, you know, the same data just for Fairfield, and, you know, from August 2nd to September 12th, we've seen the, the same leading indicator just for Fairfield decline. And so you really are that, you're not, you know, with that data, you're not really seeing any of the impact of the universities yet or students coming back into school yet in that data. So we're, we were seeing a decline before, and yeah, and we're, we're, you know, we're, you know, we're seeing a slight increase, like everyone else is in the state, of a slight increase in the number of daily cases seen. Not significant, but a slight increase. And that's documented, and you know, if you just look at the state data, the daily sheets, the daily data that's produced by the state, you can see the curve is, you know, gradually going up since, since late June.
Is there any information in that data that of the cases, are they asymptomatic? Meaning they tested positive, you know, and they don't?
So we have, there's no state data on that. We have some local data from our interviews with cases, so, you know, how generalizable it is to the population, I don't know, but we have some data on how many people are experiencing asymptomatic, how many cases are asymptomatic.
Okay. Mr. Peterson?
Hi, thanks for coming in today. I really appreciate it. Just a couple of, a couple of basic questions. Just, just to be clear on one thing, I don't want to make this clear and public. Since the- Since the guidance was released from the state on the low, moderate, high-risk scale, have we ever been anywhere other than the low-risk portion of that scale for either the primary or the secondary indicators?
So for the leading indicator, we have never been in any other category other than favors in-person learning. For the secondary indicators, for Connecticut and Fairfield County, we are seeing, we will be in the favors hybrid learning category because we're seeing a slight increase in that trend, in that category, for that particular variable. So that, that-
I'm sorry, for which, which variable?
That is, percent test positivity is increasing, both at the state and the county level. So that, that's a secondary indicator where it says for in-person, it's, it's flat or decreasing. For hybrid, it's, I believe it's decreasing for, I have- Yep, it's no, for, for low or favors in-person, you know, no significantly, statistically significant changes. And then direction of change, you know, trending down to flat is, is for in-person. And secondary is trending flat to upward, which is, we're more in the flat to upward category for the first of the secondary indicators, which is test positivity. The other two in the secondary indicators are, we are in favors in-person learning.
All right, thank you. One thing that you said that concerned me a little bit, talking about the lag in the data. So basically, you're saying that the best data that we have right now are back to the 12th? Is that correct?
Yeah, if you look at the data that the state is producing, go, essentially goes back to the, you know, the data that we released this Thursday will go back to the previous Saturday. And so-
All right. And then the thing that you said immediately after that was that it might take another incubation period or two to get a clearer picture of, basically what's happening with the trajectories in some of these?
Yeah, I think that's, that's a, you know, a reasonable prudent approach is to look at the incubation periods. So now, now we've-
So what kind of timeframe is that? Are you suggesting that it might take another six to eight weeks for us to have a clear, clearer picture on whether, how to make a decision about moving back to full in-person?
So if you, you know, I tried to look at this earlier and just say, you know, so like this, this Thursday will have 11, 11 total days of experience from when school started of data. And so that's, you know, just shy of one incubation period. I think if we were to, if we were to go with one more incubation period, you know, another, another 14 days of data, that that would, that would provide us a, a sound basis to make decisions, to look at the data and say, it's, you know, we can see which, which way it's trending clearly.
I'll be honest about why this concerns me in particular. It feels like if that was going to be the mode that we were going to use to evaluate whether our case is warranted hybrid or in-person, we were never giving ourselves enough time between the beginning of school and our stated explicit date of the 25th for making a decision about going back. Was it anticipated at the time that those dates were discussed that we would not have enough data in your mind to make the decision appropriately?
So I guess I would say it wasn't, it wasn't entirely clear this, you know, how this would roll out with the state's data plan and how they would launch their data at the time. You know, for me, when, you know, I wasn't necessarily part of the group that, that decided on the 25th date, you know, that, you know, and again, it was in terms of considering all these factors and when the state was producing their data, when their data would go backwards in time too, and just to look at these indicators, you know, of how are they trending, to get a good reliable estimate. I think it's, you know, reasonable to say that, that data today, with only four days of experience of kids in school, is not, is not enough data to make a reasonable decision upon.
I, I understand that. I, this feels like it was a foreseeable complication. And I am concerned, I'll just close by saying I, I would be concerned about what message we're sending to our parents and to our community if we engaged in a, in a plan that we knew from the beginning we might not have enough time to make a proper evaluation about before, before the 25th.
Yeah, when I address that, I think when we picked the 25th, I know when we picked the 25th, we were not aware of, as Mr. Clary spoke about, the lag in the state data. But we also were thinking beyond just the data itself. What we were looking at were the things that we measured in the survey that went out to the administrators last week. So what we were going to look at by the 25th was how were we responding, how were students responding to the mask bearing? How were we responding to the social distancing? How were we responding to the physical space issues? Sanitizing, bus rides, all those other things that we were, that were part of the plan and are part of the secondary indicators. So the data was certainly part of it, but it was also our ability to respond to logistical issues, the safety and health issues that we were facing in the first month, in the first four, four weeks of school, three weeks of school.
No, and I understand that. And I know we'll go into those in more detail later on. But we do have to make a clear distinction between things that are logistical challenges and things that are health-related, data-oriented.
I'll have to go back and check. I think that when we set the date for the 25th, I'm not sure that the state guidance, we had the state guidance yet on what it was going to look like. I think it happened right around the same time. So we might have set and don't, as I said, I have to check. But I remember that it was, we were waiting and waiting and waiting, and it hadn't come. And we had to move forward on deciding what we were going to do. Any other questions, Jeff? Ms. Jacobson?
Hi, Sands. Thanks for coming. I appreciate you being here tonight. When we last met with you on August 11th, we asked about, you know, what it would take for you to feel comfortable with more in-person learning. And you gave us the things that Mr. Cummings has just mentioned, more of, you know, how's mask compliance? How's hand washing? How is people showing up to school with symptoms? I don't know who wants to answer this, and it might be becoming later. But just really briefly, in your opinion, how are those things going?
So I think Mike is planning to address the results of the survey.
Wait for that? Okay.
You know, in, in terms of the, the, you know, what we're not seeing at this point, which is a great thing, is we're not seeing large, large numbers of cases in the schools. We're not seeing large outbreaks. We're not seeing any complications like that. You know, we are seeing a few, and we, in the, both public and private, and we are seeing some quarantined individuals related to community cases. But, you know, we are not seeing significant outbreaks at this point. You know, but we want, you know, that, you know, there's incubation periods and some of that sometimes takes time. We're, we are hopeful that the mitigation measures that the school system has put in place are effective and are being adhered to, and that they are what is keeping the numbers down. And we hope that, that trend continues.
So since Mike's going to go into that later, I'll just follow up on that afterwards. But thank you. I have a question from a town-wide perspective. So you know how we have these learning, I mean, model indicators from the state for public schools? You know, the in-person learning and the hybrid learning and the full remote learning based on these leading indicators and the secondary indicators and the additional considerations, right? Are those also applicable in the town of Fairfield to all learning institutions?
So, so obviously, I think they, these are guidance from the state that the state has said, this is what we'd like to follow. Obviously, some private schools have, have made their own decisions to go with full in-person learning, with full classes and five days a week. So they have made those choices and are proceeding in that manner.
So I'm just asking though, as a public health perspective for you, as the person tasked with, you know, providing guidance to our town and businesses and everything else in terms of how they operate, do you think that public, private schools and the universities should be following the same metrics as we are being held to here?
So I guess, you know, there's, there's a variety of different metrics that, that different businesses are being held to.
Just schools, just schools?
Yeah.
The universities and the private schools and the public schools using the same exact things?
So I think in the sense, I think there should be some flexibility for difference in terms of the, when it comes to the universities, because it's, it's a different situation altogether with congregate housing and, you know, it's just a different situation altogether. So there should be some adjustments there. And, but the universities as well should be held accountable for taking the appropriate actions when they see cases on their campus. And that's part of our role is, you know, our contact tracers work with theirs nearly every single day, talking to them about cases. And myself and our team talks to those who are in the leadership teams for COVID nearly every day to make sure they're doing the right things and to consult with them on the steps they are taking and provide them guidance on areas where they're questioning what they should be doing next. And so we are available to them. In terms of the private schools, you know, it, it, you know, it provides experience for us to see what they're doing. So right now, we have private schools doing something different. And it's providing experience for us to say, you know, that it is working there so far, you know, and that we're not seeing significant outbreaks. So we, you know, we don't, you know, it's, as I said before, there are guidelines, there are recommendations for them to follow, and they have chosen to do different things, some of them. And so we are watching that. We are trying to ensure that they're doing the best they can in terms of adhering to as much of the guidelines as, as we can make them. You know, but it does provide some, some experience for us.
Okay, so, so far, at least with the private schools who are in five full days with 100% of their students, there's not a statistically significant variance in the number of cases than what we have at FPS?
Well, I haven't run the statistics, but I would say off the top of my head, no, there's not a, there's not a big difference.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do you know what the class size is at our private schools? Like how many kids are in a, just in terms of cohorting?
Jill, the class size?
Push, okay. Many of the class sizes in the private schools are significantly lower than what we have in, in the public school setting. You should know that prep is, is not full-on in-person. Prep is a cohort model right now. But if you take some of the other smaller Catholic school, let's, well, the one Catholic school that I'm thinking of, I mean, they, they could have a, an enrollment of eight children in the entire eighth grade class. So it really could be quite a bit less. I'm not so sure that's absolutely current because as, as they can provide full in-person learning, more and more students are enrolling there. But that's actually the, the class size for an eighth grade class.
Okay, I just think, you know, there's a lot of private schools, so with variances, I'm sure, in enrollment and class sizes. So I think that it's going to be important as we go forward to make sure that, you know, we're not having different rules for different kids in the town of Fairfield. And that, you know, if we're going to say that, I don't know what's going to happen, but if we're going to say that Fairfield kid, that no Fairfield kids, other than a rare few, are going to be able to go full-time, then that's going to be a different experience than another system that's operating that is letting their kids go full-time. And I think we need to be careful about different rules for different people. So I would be really curious in finding out going forward exactly what are those class sizes and being able to really look at that and see if there is a difference. If there is, then it tells us a story, as Sands was saying. But if there isn't, that also tells us a story.
Some of the, some of the private schools that I toured this summer, they, they have a lot more real estate than, than you would expect, you know, in a regular elementary school. And they're able to really maximize it. I'm sure classroom size, yes. Social distancing, they're really able to do that. And they just have the resources, I mean, phenomenal resources to be able to do that. And I don't think that would be a possibility in a, a public school setting.
Thank you. Ms. Teresa?
I have some questions for Sands. So I have a few questions, but the first one I'm going to start with is, how is contact tracing going?
So it's going well. We're, we're able to keep up with the cases. We're, I feel like we're being a very effective health department in that we are following up on every, every case, every contact. We're getting them into the, the state system. We're, you know, monitoring them for 10 days. We are able to quickly respond, you know, with, with the one issue we had in a private school. We responded and had, had all the contact tracing done within, you know, hours. You know, so it's, 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 we pull the team together. They respond quickly. We're working, you know, evenings, weekends, you know, and so it's, it's going well, you know?
Okay, so thank you for that. My next question is more about the logistics and kind of clarifying the role that your department plays in our FPS decision-making from here on out. And, because what I'm hearing is that everything is indicating full in-person learning. But what I'm not hearing you say is that that's what you recommend. So I'm curious from the Fairfield Public Health Department, because, you know, we made the decision to go hybrid because even though we were in green zones, there was logistical issues, you know, lunch issues, all sorts of other things that go in. So taking that into consideration or not, I'm curious to know what your recommendation is. If logistics were worked out in time and we stay in this green zone, do you recommend a full in-person?
So I, I view my role as to provide guidance, to facilitate the school system and the board to make decisions regarding the school system. So I can provide you guidance on interpreting the data, to review the data critically, to, you know, as I've said, you know, I think it would, would be prudent to, to continue to look at the data, being that the way the data is presented, we only have four days of experience in classrooms at this point. And so I think that's, you know, I'm not trying to make the decision for the schools. I'm trying to provide the best possible information I can to facilitate this board and the school system to make the decision.
Okay, so outside of going from green to orange to red, what are some of the things that you can, what are some of the guidance that you can or have given us other than those three-colored zones?
So I, you know, again, the, you, so we have this, this standard that's before us that we've, we're working within about these, these leading indicators, secondary indicators, and additional considerations. And then we've talked about other potential impacts to the community. So we, at one point, we talked about, you know, the impact of what's going on in other states and the potential for travel to introduce that. We've talked about what's going on throughout the country. You know, right now, we're still seeing, you know, we're, throughout the country, we're still seeing very high numbers of cases. I mean, we are seeing cases, daily numbers of cases that are higher throughout the country, I'm saying, than at the peak of our April experience. So that's what's going on right now. So this, this, while we are, we are experiencing something different in the Northeast throughout the rest of the country, is still experiencing very high numbers of daily cases. So, so, you know, for me, I look at that and I have to take that into consideration. I have to take into consideration what's going on in the country, what's going on in nearby states, what's going on with the travel advisory and the potential to introduce that, what's going on with the, the patterns and associations with the cases that we see. So right now, what we're seeing is fairly well-defined cases where it's, when we, when we talk to somebody, they can understand, they, for the most part, understand where they were exposed, how they're exposed, who their contacts were. You know, back in April, we got to a point with contact tracing where, where the response was, I have no idea where I got exposed. I don't know, I don't know, I didn't know anybody who had it. I don't know how I got it. And that's more indicative of community-wide transmission. So those are the types of conversations that we're having with the people. Those are the types of conversations that we're having with the universities to say, are these cases well-defined? Are they controllable? You know, and so that's some of the considerations we have to look at. For me, that's what I have to look at and say- For me, that's what I have to look at and say, where do we feel this is going? Right now, while we're seeing increases in cases, at this point, it's still very well-defined, very well-controllable through contact tracing, quarantine and isolation, as long as the individuals are complying with that. And so that's what we have to deal with. It's voluntary self-quarantine, self-isolation. And so it's, part of it is also that compliance, you know? So we are seeing people, we have seen people throughout our experience not complying with that. And then we also have seen, and as you may have seen, you know, the pictures and photos of different gatherings throughout the town, and those are concerning to us. And we have to work as a community to discourage that and to dissuade that and try to use whatever tools we have to control that, because all those factors play into what we all fear is going back to what our experience was in April, where we're seeing lots of cases and all of, everybody knew somebody that had it at that point. And so we don't want to see that, we don't want to go back to that kind of standing, that posture.
Okay, so I have a little bit of a clearer understanding now of that it's, your role is with the guidance and will continue to be guidance. So that being said, with regards to guidance, can you give the board and the public an update as to whether things have changed since August, when we talked about three-foot spacing versus six-foot spacing with masks at lunch, masks off? So, you know, one of the things that you mentioned, you know, six-foot spacing when possible, but I remember talking about CDC saying three-foot spacing, but then when it came to lunch, if masks were off, you know, what is the adequate spacing? And if it were going to be closer than six feet, what would we need in order to safely get more kids in the building where they might have to be closer? Can you give some suggestions or guidance on that?
So, you know, again, Mike and myself and others, you know, sit in weekly, numerous weekly conference calls, but one with the State Department of Ed and State Department of Public Health, that talks about those variety of various different techniques, things like if you're eating lunch, you know, that you're not, you're not having raucous conversation during that, that lunches should be as close to silent or soft conversation to try and increase the distance as much as possible. Some people, some school systems have gone with partitions that are placed on the desks to reduce the potential of transmission. So there's a variety of techniques like that, a variety of strategies that have been brought up and that many school systems have considered that, you know, we should be considering. But I think those, you know, there's a lot of them out there that we can look at and consider, you know? But I think the school system, the administrators know their schools know how best to achieve these things, and I think we look to them for solutions of how they can place students at the greatest distance possible to make them as safe as possible.
So is three feet with masks in a classroom still acceptable? Forget lunch in the classroom?
So there's no official guidance that says three feet is okay. There's an article by the American Academy of Pediatrics that alludes to that potentially for younger children, three feet may be adequate with masks on. So, but that has not been adopted by the CDC to, where in their school guidance, they've said, okay, we can go down to three feet. So there's varying guidance saying three feet, six feet. And so, and even the general guidance, the state says, wear a mask if you can't be, maintain six feet from other people. So even the state guidance to the general community says, you know, there are times when you can be within six feet of people, as long as you have your masks on. And so I think it's, you know, there's not 100% clarity on the issue and that we have to work towards trying to maintain the best distance we can. And when, when six feet is not possible, is, are there other means, other potential measures we can take to further reduce that? Masks, you know, properly worn masks, masks that are, you know, people are complying with is one of the most significant control strategies we have.
And my last question is, I know Mr. Cummings is constantly in communication with other superintendents from other districts and talking about what they're doing. Are they going from, you know, full remote to in-person, hybrid to in-person, transitioning into full-time in the buildings? Just curious if the same holds true in your field. Do you have contact with some of our surrounding towns' health directors? And is that something that you would talk about with them? Let's say we have a district not far from here that has gone or is going back full in-person. Is that something that you would be in contact with their health department to try and monitor and see what kind of trends or anything, or any data they may gather from that?
So I'll answer, yes, that we, you know, we have regular communication. We have a weekly conference call with the State Department of Public Health and all local health directors. In addition, most of the local health directors participate in the Tuesday conference call with State Department of Education, because we're all involved in providing guidance to our schools. So, so yes, we are talking, you know, about a variety of different issues, you know, from contact tracing cases and tracking things around the state to schools and to compliance issues with community issues. So we're talking about all those issues.
Okay, thank you. And the last thing I had was for Jill, really, and you could even just give a nod, but how is it going at the school level with the nurses and compliance? Or are there any issues at the nurse level that you're finding? If you have to answer, you have to come to the mic, I'm sorry.
As I mentioned to Mr. Cummings, anecdotally, the nurses feel that compliance on the other indicators such as mask-wearing is excellent. They really feel that it is. We, our visits to the office themselves are quite low. I mean, our nurses are used to getting 30, 40, sometimes even 50 visits a day at some of these schools, and we're down to a half a dozen. And, you know, for medications or diabetic students, you know, needing to come in and check, but really has been quite low. I will say that it's been challenging, particularly in this time of year, to assess the kinds of symptoms that the nurses are seeing in the schools. As you know, so many allergies, symptoms of allergies will mimic some of the minor symptoms of the COVID-19. But we have to take all of that very seriously, and we have to use, you know, Addendum V religiously to make the kinds of decisions for the disposition of the student.
Thank you.
This is Max Caneli.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Teresa. That was my last question there, was wondering how those isolation rooms were going. So it's wonderful, because I do think that those little numbers are very much a tribute to parents taking seriously our request of them, that if you see symptoms, to keep them home. So I'm delighted to hear that. Mr. Cleary, several questions, and I'm going to be kind of picking up right where Mrs. Jacobson had been, and that's the town's relationship with these universities. Because, well, let me start with this. You work on with the emergency management team, correct?
That's correct.
And they have power apart from anything that's done by executive order at the state, correct? They can implement rules for the town of Fairfield that don't need state permission. Example, there are no, dogs are not supposed to be off-leash at Lake Mohegan. Governor Lamont has not weighed in on that one. That's something that's a local rule. I'm not trying to challenge that one, I'm just giving it as an example.
So, you know, most of these things have to fall under some type of authority. And so the, I believe on that, I mean, I should say, on several things, the town attorney was consulted and it was weighed in on, does the first select woman have the authority under the executive, the emergency powers that she's been granted by declaring emergency to make these types of decisions? And those things that we've done fall under that authority. So it does have to fall under some authority. We don't, we just simply can't, you know, tell the university to close, you know, because we want them to, you know?
Which, of course, is exactly where I was going. And not that I'm advocating for closing. I've heard very good things in terms of, particularly with what's happening on campus at the two universities. There have been several people, you know, praising the steps that they are taking. On the other hand, I don't think there is anyone in this town that questions that the uptick in numbers is for one reason, and it is a clearly identifiable reason at this point in time, and it is the presence of those two campuses in this town. And so I'm wondering just what more can be done, ramped up, as a recommendation from perhaps the emergency management team, I'm sure of which you would be a part, to the first select woman, of what, and I know that right now, what we want it to be is something that's done in cooperation. Obviously, that's the ideal, and I'm sure that there have been many ongoing conversations. I believe you've referenced them already. But in fact, if our public schools are prevented from going to full in-person learning because of the numbers produced by those campuses, you're going to have a revolution on your hands. And especially if it's something that we can do something about. And that's where I'm grateful for Mr. Ace's question about the contact tracing, because if all of that contact tracing work with these university students is reflecting again and again, minimal contact, you know, of the substantive nature, you know, the 15 minutes of a close conversation counts as a close contact, that person needs to quarantine. And if by and large, that's not happening, then we need this, some form of isolation, something that, and again, I'm, this is not, that's not my profession, so it would obviously have to be coming from you and through that work of that team. And so are there, long-winded way of getting to my question, of have there been conversations of additional steps that the town of Fairfield can do to protect its own residents from a higher infraction rate, thereby keeping our students out of our public schools?
So yes, we've had multiple conversations with the universities about the steps they're taking, you know? So when we see instances of clear violations of sector rules, we've engaged the universities in, with the first select woman on down, with their emergency manager, with several parties to talk to them about the enforcement steps they should be taking and the town feels they are compelled to take, as well as conversations just on the nature of public health recommendations in terms of dealing with their individuals on campus, you know? So, and the schools do have robust, you know, isolation and quarantine plans and contact tracers that are reaching out to all these individuals that are infected or contacts of cases and are quarantining and isolating them effectively. So for those, you know, so that's, they are working on that. We talk to them on a regular basis, and, you know, we are planning, and again, I'm not here to speak on behalf of the emergency management team. Chief McCarthy is the emergency management director. He could attest to some of this better than I, but, you know, we are planning at the chief's leading to, you know, so we have, we have near-daily contact with the universities, my department, you know? So, but we are working to set up a more established, regular meeting with not just the public health aspects of the universities, but with some of the public safety and leadership of the universities to address just those types of issues. What significant actions are you taking, you know, to address what are, what appear to be clear practices that are leading to increases in infections? And so what we're hoping is that the steps that they're taking will sort of curb this situation that's going on right now at the universities and that we'll see a flattening out of the cases and then a decline as people recover. So that's what we're working on. That's what, that's our goal, is to, we see this issue and we're trying to work with them to address it.
Okay, because something I have yet to see as a headline is something, anything similar to what we saw coming out of UConn. "Partying Students Sent Home." We haven't seen that here in Fairfield. And I wrote down the quote when you said it, because it, as you can imagine, will grab my attention, is that they have to be held accountable. They are endangering the town if this doesn't happen. And so I just would like to throw into that conversation happening in, you know, in town hall of what can be done to increase the protection of this town. We did our job. We worked very hard, and we absolutely sacrificed. Hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of students and families sacrificed so that we could open, and we were not able to open in the way that we originally envisioned. And right now, even the modicum of freedoms that we have in our schools is being threatened by two very, very discernible sources. So I would just like to add my voice most adamantly to the notion of those conversations need, of course, need to be, again, I want it to be in cooperation. I think they have been great neighbors. But right now, they're jeopardizing something serious. And I'm not, again, we have yet to hear of any disciplinary action taken against the students who continue to hold these parties, which are jeopardizing the public education of our students. On one, do you know if there's been any conversation with them regarding their October break and what's happening with their Thanksgiving break? Are these students going home, at which point they undoubtedly could be traveling to places that are on, states that are on the quarantine upon return? Do we know what's happening with that October and November? Are they going home and then staying till January? Or are they coming back from Thanksgiving?
So I have not had any conversations about those particular issues with the universities, and I'm not aware of any. They may be going on, but I don't, I'm not aware of any that have. And so I think those are some of the things that we're going to, we're trying to set up the regular communications with the universities in terms of a standardized agenda and regular meetings with them to address some of those issues, in terms of the events, some of the events that are leading, coming up and planning for.
Okay, because, I mean, that's, again, information I think that would be valuable for the public to just know as a means of reassurance. I mean, there is no October break, they're staying around, which would be as reassuring as could be, but, or November, they're not coming back. I think it'd be nice to have some feedback on that. Again, obviously, they're private institutions, but right now, we need them to be very positive neighbors.
Can I answer a couple of her questions?
Yeah, and I don't want to get too far on Fairfield University and, because that's not really our purview. I mean, I think that you understand the board's understandable concern about the activities of these students. I am also very concerned particularly about those students that are living off-campus, that maybe the university does not have that much oversight over. And I don't know, maybe that everyone is on campus being, you know, isolating there. Questions just about what they were doing before they tested positive. I mean, I see when food shopping, there's a ton of kids in supermarkets, standing in line at restaurants, at the beach, and it's concerning. And I think I just, I have flashbacks to March where everything was fine, and in a matter of days, it wasn't. So what you're hearing right now is just a lot of people that want to head it off at the pass. Ms. Pitko?
I was just going to say, I agree, they should be more forthcoming with everything that is going on on their campuses, but they have, at Sacred Heart University, where I'm an employee, we get daily emails about all the precautions they took, and then as soon as they test positive, the contact tracing they're doing, where that student was, who's getting quarantined, where the student got it from. They, everything they're doing, even down to, yes, after Thanksgiving, the students are not coming back, and they've delayed the spring until February. So I don't know what's going to happen from November to February, but they've put all that information out there for the students, the parents and the employees, but they haven't really told the town.
Okay, thank you for that. And I'm pretty sure after November, what they do is at-home final exams, but that's neither here nor there. Two other questions, so thank you. And please understand that the emotion behind all of that was not directed at you, it was about the issue. So I appreciate your awkward position on this one. One thing that Ms. Mitchell said, and maybe you could speak to, is it talked about learning from the private schools. Is there anything that's been learned from the private school experience that we can take something from? Obviously, if they have bigger space and we have smaller space, we can't take anything from that. But is there anything from their experience that you think is valuable for us to know?
So for me, you know, it's just, it's about the data, you know? So the more days we have of kids in school full-time and without any significant instances of increases in cases, is data that's valuable to us. And so for me, that was what I would say, learning from them, their experience. They've made a decision to do certain things, and we can learn from that. Jill, I don't know if you have anything to offer in terms of other learning opportunities from the private schools?
It's more just an observation. I'm not so sure that we learned anything. As I said, just an observation. I don't know what the takeaway message is, but at one of the private schools, they're not cohorting. There was a positive case in the class, and the entire grade had to quarantine, and they're still not back. They had to quarantine for two weeks. And I just think, well, gee, if they had co-horted, at least half of the students would have some sort of in-person learning. So it's an observation. I don't know what the takeaway message from that is, I have to think about it a bit more. But it did happen, and none of those children had But it, it did happen and none of those children had any schooling for two weeks. No in-person schooling. And I see the value of cohorting in that.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question, and I have a feeling I know what the answer is going to be, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. When it comes to, I think four of the, the big four, when it comes to the measures we are supposed to be taking, which is masks, the distancing, the, I'll just call it hand hygiene, whether it's sanitizer or washing, and the conditions of the school ventilation system. Can you prioritize those anymore? Like, here's the absolute most valuable, most impactful for preventing the spread versus the others. I mean, obviously, we've talked about the three versus six feet, but can you provide any color to that?
So again, I, I would, from the conversations I've listened to on the state conference calls over and over again, from the folks who wrote the guidance on masks, is that masks, compliance with mask use is the, is really the factor that is most critical in being, having a successful school experience. So I would put that at the top of the list. They have, they have talked about, you know, the need for adequate cleaning and hand sanitizing as, as important, but definitely not on this, on the level of mask use. And the ventilation, you know, they have said, you know, it's, you should always be looking to, in, in every opportunity possible, to increase the intake of fresh air and introduce fresh air into the classroom. And so as long as efforts are being made in that direction, they, you know, and they've talked about how many air exchanges and all those types of things, and, and they've really said, you know, I've, on the conference calls, they've said it's really just focus on increasing fresh air intake and swapping out with the best filters that you can, that your system can handle without burning out your motors, and sort of looking at those improvements. And then just, you know, clean, the regular cleaning. But it really is the, the one that, the number one that they focus on over and over again is the mask use, is, is ensuring that the kids and the staff and everybody involved wears their masks as much as possible. They get used to them. They, you know, have their scheduled breaks so they can do it. And, and just understanding that when you take your mask off, you know, how to behave and not have those kind of conversations and not just immediately engage in, in behaviors that increase the risk of transmission.
Just for the six-foot distance, I looked today on the CDC website. It is still the recommendation that it should be six feet, correct?
Yep.
Recommendation?
Yeah.
Okay, when feasible, but still, like, that is, that is the, if you have the gold standard for what distancing should be, it should still be six feet. Like, the other considerations, six, six feet is still the guide. And I think that we all know that. I mean, when food shopping, the announcement, six feet from the person in front of you, you're standing in line at the supermarket, six feet from the person in front of you. I had to wait in line to get into Trader Joe's, six feet, you know, from the person in front of me. So I know when feasible, but I, I think that we still need to keep in mind the other considerations that came with the health guidance. You know, there, the, the ranking for low, medium and high favors in-person, and we are in some measure in-person. The other considerations also have to be part of the conversation, and they have been, which is why we are not fully in-person. I just feel like it's kind of getting minimized a little bit, and we're, we're talking about comparing, you know, private schools to public schools and I don't know if we're really comparing apples to apples, because you need to look at every, every parameter and see if those things are equal. Right now, mask compliance is, seems to be going well, but I wonder, would it be as effective if kids were in school all day, five days a week? I would hope so, but let's not lose track of assuming that if you change one variable, that everything's gonna stay the same. Mrs. Gerber?
I just thought to go along with Ms. Pitko's information, just in case anyone is listening who's wondering, I did check and Fairfield U is not having an October break. They are all going home for Thanksgiving and they're not coming back until January 18th. And the spring semester is still a work in progress. But just so that everyone knows, the two universities, those are their plans. They sound pretty much the same, so that is helpful.
Ms. Jacobson?
Just one question that's non-COVID related, actually, since you're getting together regularly with other, your colleagues from around the state. I'm just wondering if there's any trends or concerns for health departments throughout the state that's not COVID-related, that have been consequential from isolations or lockdowns in terms of other health and safety concerns that have maybe increased or been exacerbated because of the current situation? Mental health, or people not seeing the doctors much, or just anything like that that you're hearing about that you might know about?
I, you know, there may be, but we're pretty much COVID 24/7, you know, most all of us. Everyone that I've talked to, you know, is, that's really all we're doing. There's, there's, you know, some other issues that are going on in terms of, you know, food security and things like that, that we're all working on and trying to address those issues. The social service needs, addressing the, you know, the impact of quarantine and isolation on, on some families is more impactful than others. And so it's ensuring that we're addressing those needs and, you know, but it's really, it's, it's, you know, almost my sole function, you know, has been COVID for a long time now.
Ms. Leeper?
Thanks for answering all those questions. I actually want to ask a follow-up question from Mr. Peterson, sort of line of thinking. And I'm having a little deja vu from, I think it was our, our August 25th meeting where I was asking about the metrics, so that families can have understanding of what the expectation is for us to decide it's safe to, to take a next step. Because I, the last thing I want is for them to feel like we're constantly moving the goalpost. And so the point you make about the incubation periods, I think makes a lot of sense. I wish we could have been thinking about that back in August, but of course, we're all learning every day. So is there a new set of metrics now that we know the lag in data coming from the state where after two incubation periods, then we feel like we're safe if our numbers are still in the green zone to progress to, and maybe we don't go full in-person, maybe we stagger it? Kindergarten, just, just for an example, would go and we give it a week or two, whatever the incubation period is, for us to get the data to feel like we can make the safe assessment to then evaluate, okay, we actually maintained in the green zone. Now let's look at K1, whatever the district decided was the appropriate path forward there. But do we have any clearer metrics yet that the community can really point to and say, okay, this is where we need to get?
So the, to address one of the issues you talked about, so the first time today I heard on the State Department of Ed, Department of Public Health conference call, they talked about the transitional from hybrid to full in-person and maybe focusing on, you know, not, not having it happen all at once. So that was the first mention I had heard of that. One of the epidemiologists just talked about sort of focusing on those educationally high-risk populations, the, the populations that need to be in school. And again, I'm, you know, this is not my profession. I'm not telling anybody how to do it. It's, but that was their, their thought was, the kids that need to be in school more to get back on track are maybe the people you should focus on first, was, was the, the first discussion. So that, I don't think that's a moving of a goalpost, but just a, a, an additional thought. In terms of the metrics, I think, I think everybody's trying to stick to these, you know, and not, not change the goalposts and not, not move things, but say, you know, this is, this is what we've gone with. But, you know, as you're well aware, pretty much every week, new information, new studies come out, new guidance comes out, and so there are, and improvements to data come out. And so I think there, I haven't heard of any new changes. I think everybody's trying to stick with these and say, let's, let's get to a point where we feel comfortable getting back, as long as the trends and the, are moving in the right direction or stabilizing, that I think we can, we can eventually get there.
So I just wanna say, like, when we say get comfortable, I think it would be helpful for the public if we really defined what comfortable means. And there were some metrics, which was kids tolerating the mask wearing and how effective we were with the cleaning and the hand washing and maintaining social distancing. And those things seem to have been going relatively well. But I think specifically around being like in the green return to full-in-person school zone, our numbers currently are there, but we're not saying vocally like we're going back to school. So, and you raised the point about the data lagging, that we had four days of in-person data that, yeah, in-person data that informed the numbers we have right now. And that maybe we needed one more or even two more incubation periods before we really had data that we felt like reflected accurately infections or, or community spread. And so if we can get there, then can we give a clearer idea of, of what we are comfortable with to move forward? Am I being clear?
So, you know, I think, I think you're, you're seeking the same thing that every, everybody's seeking is, is, you know, if we have X, Y and Z, then we do this. And, and I wish I could answer that for you, because there's clearly, or clearer, but I think there's, there's a lot of variables that come into play. And, and it has to do with the experience, not only here in Fairfield, but the experience throughout the state and other things going on in the country at the time, you know, that, that have a potential impact. You know, if we've, if, if our numbers are great, except there's a large-scale outbreak in a neighboring town, well, that's, that has an impact that, on a decision. And so we have to take that into consideration. And so those are the types of things that I wish I could offer more clarity. I think, you know, these, these metrics provide some good standards, you know. We are, we are in the favors in-person learning in most of them, with the exception of those two that I mentioned, that are somewhat increasing, the positivity rate is, is increasing both at the county level and the state level. So it's, you know, there's, so I think we, if we get a little bit more experience in terms of, you know, children returning to school and the experience of that for a few more weeks, both in the Fairfield experience, the county experience, and at the state, state level, then, then we can be comfortable with saying, okay, so now we've, now we have a, a, a good period of time with experience of kids in school, and we can see that things are, are not happening in a certain pattern, you know. And so that, that would give people comfort. Now, you know, again, it's, it's, we always have to factor in that the likelihood of what we will experience if we transition to something back to this. You know, we will expect, likely expect greater likelihood of transmission. So we'll see more, we will likely see more cases. You know, we will likely see the impact of bringing in kids into, into classrooms and lessening that separation distance will result in more quarantines. So because, because a quarantine involves somebody who was within six feet of that person for 15 minutes, then kids sitting next to that person now are gonna be quarantined, where currently, we hope to apply contact tracing and the spacing to say, you know, potentially nobody in that class, if, if things are done right, potentially nobody in that has, has, class has to quarantine other than the case, if things are done right. Now, that's why we interview and talk to the parents and the teachers and, and the staff in the school to make sure. But, so there's, there's impacts to this, the potential impacts to bringing kids back to full, full school where we're lessening the, some of those distances. And so those have to be weighed into this factor, this decision as well, is we have to get to a point in the community, you know, we talked about flattening the curve. So right now, we're at a point where, you know, hospitalizations are at relatively low to level, you know, there is adequate capacity in ERs and ventilators and all those types of things, you know, and, but what's happening right now is that level's going up slightly. And so we have to make sure we maintain that. And, and, and we expected that level to somewhat go up as we, as, as students return to school, both college and, and school, school levels. But, you know, we wanted to get to a point where is, is this an acceptable level? And that's a, a sort of a larger decision to be made, but can we keep it at a level, level, at, at, progressing at a, a level, or even try to take additional measures to decrease that? So those are all things we have to factor in.
I have two, oh, I have two other questions, but are not related to this. So if people want to...
Just about the rate of positivity rate and rate of transmission. I followed this website, I think COVID Now, and last, I think it was Thursday, that I got a notification that Connecticut was like heading towards a risk of an outbreak based on the fact that we were trending upward. So how concerned, and that is one of the secondary indicators, that we are going in the wrong direction? Like, we brought kids back to school and it didn't stay flat. Now, we were expecting some sort of an increase, and thankfully, it seems like it's flattening off over the last few days. But, you know, at what point, you know, if it keeps on going forward, we could still be in green, but the line is still trending upwards. So what do people make of that, of that upward trend? Or how concerned should we be about that upward trend?
So, yeah, so there's a lot of websites, a lot of data sources out there, you know, and some of them, you know, so Connecticut calculates things, a couple of different variables, specifically the, the seven-day average, a little differently based upon collection date of the specimen as opposed to reporting date. And so it makes a difference in terms of the stability of the number. So a lab dumps, you know, 100 cases one day, and it happens to be a, a lab that one of our places goes to in town, and we have 50 of those, you know, and we get hit. And it looks like we have this tremendous spike, but it doesn't. So specimen collection date sometimes softens that blow. And so Connecticut is one of the only states that uses, uses that metric, you know, because they feel it's more reliable. I agree with that. You know, we, we have that on our website as well. We did that before the state started using it. And so it, it's, you know, you have to look at all those things and see, see where the trend's going. So now, the State Department of Ed and then State Department of Public Health don't say, you know, there's this criteria, that criteria, and COVID act now. You know, it's, it's, so we have to look at that and say, weigh that in. You know, I look at many of those sites every single day just to see where they're going. And so, yes, on some sites, we go, we've clicked up to the orange level. And so, and our county, you know, and a lot of, and a lot of different sites. And that's part of the, part of the concern, I'm, you know, I hope I'm adequately expressing tonight, is that, you know, while we are in a favors in-person learning status and a lot of variables, there's still, there's still signs for concern out there. You know, I don't want to say alarm, but there's some signs for concern if things are, you know, are, are looking, like, like, like they're increasing. You know, as soon as our, our naught rate goes above one, well, that's a sign of spread, not a sign of decrease. And so we have to look at that and consider that. Now, we've gone above one before and we came back down, and hopefully, we'll do the same. But it really, you have to look at that trend over time.
Ms. Pitko?
I'm curious, are we seeing any kind of increase in like mental health data? Maybe among, you know, our student population or the elderly population?
So, you know, I, I, I don't routinely follow those metrics, but I've heard anecdotal, you know, so we participate in various groups that look at that. And so they've talked about sort of anecdotal information and the need to, you know, ensure that those services are still being provided. So I, I just have anecdotal data about, yes, we are seeing more depression and, you know, those types of issues.
Ms. Jacobson?
I just had a comment on Mrs. Leeper's request and about new metrics and that kind of a thing. Not formally, but what I've done is that what is interesting is that because school districts have opened, open under so many variances of models throughout the state that we are now have access to, since that's gonna be published every week for every district, how they're operating. Unfortunately, what I would like to see them do is co-add one more column and put test positivity right next to that. Because right now, you have to manually go back and match the days and say, okay, on this week, they were full hybrid and their numbers were this. This week, they added K2. Did it go up? This week, they added K8. Did it go up? You know, so in other words, getting down to the nitty-gritty of, does the model actually matter in the data? And that will be able to do that in the next, like, as Claire said, we've only had one day, one week of reporting on that. And I think that you are correct, that if we had the two more weeks where schools were been, will have been in either three weeks or four, we will be able to look at that mo, every single model, the change in numbers, positive or negative, and answer the question, does the model matter? So that is my goal, and I'm hoping that the state will start putting two and two. They have a million data sets, but none that are combined. They have a million data sets, but none that are combined. So two plus two together and start looking at things in a holistic picture kind of way.
Any other questions for Mr. Cleary, Ms. Leeper?
So just to be clear, I'm not advocating for rushing back. And of course, we're going to continue to factor in all of those other metrics you did. And I thought that the bands were already factoring sort of like county-wide infection rates, so that if there was a hotspot in a neighboring town, that would be that would already have been factored in to whether or not we were in a green zone or or in zone. But I'm just trying to provide some transparency for families for how long we are going to be in a green zone before taking a step to trying to get more kids more in-person school. So that was really all, I'm trying to make sure that families have transparency. This is obviously extremely stressful time for families. But I have a special education question. Is this the right time to ask that?
Right now, just any health last questions about health? No? Thank you so much for coming and spending the last hour or so with us asking our questions. Before you leave, can you just give us any information on flu clinics?
Sure, we have, well, are we full up tomorrow?
We're full up.
We're full up tomorrow. We have one tomorrow, but it's it's absolutely full. We're taking reservations, so check our website.
We're going to be rescheduling additional clinics as of October 1st.
Okay, so check our website where, you know, we we are, we didn't get all our flu vaccine in all at one time, so we're having to do smaller clinics and and taking appointments right now and so and for COVID reasons as well. So, but check our website. Well, as soon as we set a clinic up, it goes up on the website when we get start taking appointments.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the operation side of reopening. Mr. Cummings, the floor is yours. I'm going to get out of the way.
I'm just going to see if I can get this back up and get the screen back up as this comes on. All right, I'm losing you. I don't have the. Do we have any tech helping the audience? Yeah, I'll look at each other. Just not getting the screen mirror. Like the the PowerPoint is up on the screen, and we can go to paper if we need to. But thank you, Dr. Zavichinsek. I just couldn't get the screen to mirror there. Oh, Dr. Parrish is on it already.
Can I just have unanimous consent to take a five-minute recess?
Yes.
Yeah, Spain, that half the people have already recessed, so. Discussion of reopening of schools. Mr. Cummings has his PowerPoint up and working now, so we will give it back to you, Mike.
Thank you. I'm going to just give a couple introductory remarks, and I'm going to go through the slides. So I want to, again, they've left, but I want to thank Mr. Cleary and Ms. Mitchell for being here tonight. And they addressed a lot of the, I know, the health questions that have been on people's minds and the health metrics. That's obviously extremely important information for us, both in the planning we've already done and in the planning going forward. And, you know, I I think it's clear that they spoke to, as Mr. Cleary spoke about, those Department of Public Health meetings, which we have every Tuesday morning with the Department of Public Health and the State Department of Education are extremely important to all of us who partake in them. There's actually even one this Friday morning that they're doing just with the superintendents, as the superintendents across the state are wrestling with the same decisions that that we're wrestling with. So I want to address a couple of things first and then talk a little bit about the Department of Public Health meeting that actually took place this morning, because there was, as Mr. Cleary talked about, there was some interesting information in there that we had not heard before. But but one of the things I want to address at the outset is this, that it's been clear, made clear to me in some of the emails that I've received from parents, but also conversations I've had with members of the staff, that there's this perception out there that they're that the staff of the Fairfield Public Schools is content with where we are. And I want to address that head on and say the staff of the Fairfield Public Schools is not content with where we are. I think I speak very, for everybody in the school system, when I say that until we have all of our students back full time, we're not going to be content. And we're we're committed to that. We're absolutely committed to that as the outcome and the goal of the work we're doing. I would say to you that I think that we are worried. I would say to you that I think we're concerned. It's not just the health data that worries or concerns us, it's the ability to deliver the educational program to our students that we pride ourselves on that worry and concern us as well. And while I have great appreciation for the conversation prior to this, one of the things we're going to talk about a little bit here is how we're also going to address the educational issues, because they're not going away. And a resolution of a learning model is not a resolution of an instructional system. All right, so a hybrid model or a full in-person or strictly remote still all face instructional challenges that we have to address and that our staff is committed to facing and addressing. So I had a few parents email me today, and rightfully so. I don't, I take no issue with the the emails that I receive, both for people saying we should stay in hybrid or people saying we should go to full in-person, because everybody raises a good point, and everybody's talking, expressing the needs of their kids. So it's, they're coming from the absolute best place they should be coming from. But when I I hear the concerns about the hybrid model, and I I don't dispute them, I want to be clear about that, just going to full does not solve the problems we eventually are going to have to solve with the hybrid model, because if we suspect anything about this year, it's that we're likely to be transitioning from one model to the next throughout the year. So we can't ignore the problems of the hybrid model just because we go back to the full. We eventually, we're going to come back around to those problems. And and I want to put out something else that I say something now that I think is, I know, I have no doubt will be met with a disheartened, a disheartened response. But as we talk further and further with the folks from the Department of Public Health and as you read the the information in the news media from people who I think are highly respected people in the fields of health, the likelihood that we're going to begin 21, 22 school year in the same kind of quandary is very high. So we're not in a 2021 problem, we're in a 2021, 21, 22 problem. And I've raised this issue with our executive directors, and I've raised this issue with board leadership, because we're starting to get ready for the 21, 22 budget. And how, what kind of a budget are we getting ready? Are we getting ready for a typical year? Or are we going to get ready for a pandemic budget? So I want people to be aware that in my planning and in the planning I'm going to urge upon our district, we're going to be planning for a pandemic school year in 21, 22. Because there's really nothing that says, long-term projections, and I believe me, I hate even saying this, I hate even thinking it, but that we're going to be out of the woods on this thing next summer. I think it's that kind of misplaced thinking, quite honestly, not just in Fairfield, but across the country, that has kind of led to some of the issues we faced this summer and we continue to face. So that's framing part of this conversation tonight, and it will frame the conversations going forward. So again, we are absolutely committed to bringing kids back full time. We are absolutely committed to doing that in the safest way possible. And we're absolutely committed to the idea of continuing to improve our instruction in all three learning models, so we're ready to adjust to all three learning models. The other thing I would say is, we are, we are very interested in the idea of bringing back different needs, different student groups at different times, so that that kind of graduated response that Mr. Cleary spoke about that was discussed this morning at the Department of Public Health. We, as you know, we've already begun that work with CLC students and especially Mr. McQuesi and I and other executive directors have been talking about expanding that pool of students and how that might look. We have similar issues with our EL students, for example, and our. We have similar issues with our EL students, for example, and our K and 1 and 2 students, and how might we be able to bring them back more quickly? And how do we do that? So those are all things that we're in process of trying to figure out. And I don't want anybody to think that those questions are not, you know, the questions that were keeping us up at 3:00 AM in August have just been replaced with different questions. Those questions from August still are there, haven't gone away. They've just been joined, I should say, by these other questions. So a couple of things that were said today, one of the epidemiologists at Department of Public Health said something today that I wrote down, because I thought it was really important. So he said, "Before you move from hybrid, you have to take stake of all the mitigation strategies that you currently are doing." So he said, "You have to think about what happens when you put more kids on the bus." All right, a lot of this is self-evidence, I'm sure you've thought of these things yourself, but it's always good to hear somebody from a different field, and particularly from the field of health, say these things. You have to start thinking about your ventilation systems, your cycling of air in the ventilation systems, particularly with colder weather coming on, and the ability to draw air in from outside. And if you double the amount of students in the room, what happens to your cycling of You have to think about the fact, and it was mentioned before with Mr. Cleary, that if you increase the number of students in a room or in a building, when you do have a positive case, you increase the risk of transmission, but you also send more students into quarantine. And you're going to have more cleaning impacts. So these are, and those are just some of the things that they mentioned, but these are all things that we think about, not as roadblocks, not as roadblocks, but as how we begin to prepare for the next phase of the work. So let me jump into the slides, and the only preface I'd make to the slides themselves is this. When we ask the principals, we ask principals to do this with their leadership teams in their buildings, so that would include other administrators and teacher leaders. And we ask them to respond to conditions on the ground now. So it's the hybrid mitigation strategies. It wasn't a consideration of what would happen if we were full, right? It's how we are right now, so that we could identify what needs to be shored up. And then what we said is, in the comments for each of the questions, that's where you can think about what happens if we're going to go back full. So project into the future a little bit the concerns you'd have. So if you look at the information that was shared with you this afternoon, the slides are about the here and now, the comments are more about concerns about the future. But I will say, reading through the comments, the comments also are about concerns with the here and now, too, so there's a mixing there of those two things. So before I begin, is there any questions? Okay, so let me jump into the slides. And it worked before. Yeah. Because it's all about the teamwork. All right, so just a couple of points to talk about before we get into each of the categories. So again, all 18 buildings were surveyed. Again, the responses are based on the current hybrid model at 50% capacity, and you'll see some variance by building level. We'll talk about, particularly on that first slide, some of the ways that things change based on conditions on the ground in elementary, middle, or high. And then I think that last bullet point is an attempt to summarize a lot of the comments that we saw when people were asked to think about what would happen if we went into full. Again, the whole point about having conversations about what would go into full is not to say, "Oh geez, we can't do this." That's to have an honest conversation about whether the next steps have to be done to address this. And the very last slide, we'll talk about some of the steps we're going to have to take. So the physical spaces allow social distancing. And again, you'll see this same pattern on every slide, so I'll only explain it out here, that high means that right now people think that the evidence is strong for this. The red is limited, that there's still concerns around this, and yellow shows no evidence. So you'll see, for example, those high indications of yellow really reflect the elementary program more than the middle and high. So PE, I'm going to single out PE there, for example, or recess. These are things that are currently not happening, so there's really no evidence yet that that's working or not working. Overall, if you look at that, you know, the indicators in blue are strong for arrival, dismissal, right? These things are all things that we can point to, but then when you look at something like buses, we still are working out with issues with the buses, and getting kids into the right seats, and making sure that we're taking attendance on the buses, so that if we have to contact trace on the buses, we know where kids are sitting, and we can trace back on where they were. Cafeterias, as you can see, so that's a middle and high school reflection, blue and red. So it's pretty much split between things either being strong or limited right now. And if you were on the tour today, you saw that there are schools that, due to some of the physical spacing, are better able to adjust to these issues than other schools, because they're slightly smaller spaces, find this a little bit more difficult to do. I think you also saw, just to speak in general to the tours, I don't want to go by this without mentioning this, I think it should be very clear to everybody, the amount of thought, care, concern that our administrators and teachers have brought to the planning at the site level. You know, every building presents its unique challenges, every building has generated unique solutions, but the amount of work that's going into this, and continues to go into this, in order to improve it is, and I'm talking only about the logistics, I'll get to the end of this, I'll start to talk about instruction, because that's even, I think, even more impressive. So physical spaces. Cohorting, overall is very strong across the district. We're seeing, the only concern there really is small cohort groups. And again, this is going to be reflected more of an issue at the middle school and the high school, as we know, and we talked about since August, right? The schedule itself presents a challenge to cohorting, but at the elementary, it remains very strong.
Mike, can I ask you a quick question? Could you define again what does strong small cohort groups mean? What does limited small cohort groups mean?
Well, on this one, small cohort groups means that we're able to keep cohorts to a relatively small level, the size of groups, I should say.
Okay. So it means it's indicating that it agrees that it is taking, the respondent is agreeing that it is taking place?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And then limited interaction simply means that we're able to separate the cohorts as much as possible. Face covering. So again, and we've heard this in all the buildings, that for the most part, the students have responded extremely well to the wearing of face masks or face coverings, and staff has responded to that as well. Ms. Vitale pointed out earlier, her comment, but it also is reflected in some of the comments that we got on this particular issue. There is some concern that if, at the elementary level, if we go to a longer day, this might become more of an issue. But I will tell you just my interactions with the administrators and teachers around this, that the face mask breaks are much appreciated. I think they're always going to be appreciated, no matter the temperature, and, you know, but it's just something we're going to have to keep in mind, particularly as the weather begins to turn. The visual reminders is an issue, and it's something that we have to look at about increasing signage around that issue. And I would say that on that last one, masks are well tolerated. I do know that those couple really hot, humid days that we had, those were really days that tried people's patience with the masks. But I think they tried people's patience with everything, because it was just as uncomfortable as it was those two days. I shouldn't say two days, there were certainly more days than that, but. Hand sanitizing, overall, is strong. Now, we're not following kids into the bathroom in general, so we're not like monitoring how, you know, if they're singing the Happy Birthday song while they're doing their hand washing, those types of things. But we are looking for the stations, that they're at the entrances, that they're in the instructional areas. We have work to do, either with signage or increasing their visibility, or increasing their placement at entrances and exits. Now, student use seems to be pretty strong, staff use is very strong, but we clearly have some concerns with hand washing, and coughing, and sneezing. And, you know, this was one of our staff's most frequent questions, quite honestly, at the beginning of the year, was, and Ms. Mitchell spoke, you know, we're dealing with allergy season to some degree, and kids sneezing, and how should we react to kids sneezing? And, you know, as the father of a couple of younger kids, the sneeze into the mask is just never a good thing, right? So I think there's this kind of, I'll quantify it as an ick moment when that happens, and I think that that's, I don't want to limit it, because it's older kids, too. It's us, right? What do I do with ourselves now? So I think that's some of that reflected data. People are uncomfortable still with people displaying any signs of illness. So Plexiglas barriers. So this is something we have, excuse me, work to do on this, that was a cough, not a sneeze. We have work to do on the barriers. We have, I think to a large part, and I'm looking at Ms. McQuesi, I think for a large part, we've met most of the special education needs. We are working our way through counseling offices, guidance counseling offices, things like that. We know that there's a high demand right now among science teachers at the secondary levels, middle school and high school, family consumer science teachers, any teachers who do kind of demonstration lessons, and kind of work towards the front of the room, this is an issue. And so we're continuing to buy Plexiglas. I think we're on our third or fourth order of 100 sheets, you know, and you can get a couple barriers out of a single sheet, those are the four-by-eight sheets. We also saw today, at Roger Lolo, some of the large, full-person barriers that were put in place in the music departments, right? That travel with the music teacher. So we are, this is going to be, you know, I'm not minimizing this by any means, but this is going to be a continual issue to continue to work on Plexiglas as we keep going forward. It's a Plexiglas production line. Cleaning and disinfecting. So overall, I think we're pretty strong at the DPH guidance, which is the issues around the hallways, the touchpoints, the bathrooms, those types of things. We have questions and concerns a lot around the instructional supplies. So some of this comes along with issues around, like, how long does paper have to sit? You know, if teachers turn in paper, if kids bring back books, there was some conversation around that on a DPH phone call this morning as well. I'll be honest, I think that sometimes they go, not DPH itself, but there's been this kind of back and forth around the touch transmission of objects through paper, and how long things actually have to wait. You know, I think we went, all went, maybe, some of us perhaps went through a period in March about, you know, when the mail came in, letting it sit for a couple days. So that guidance is, I think to some degree, less clear for people, and it's something that we quite honestly have tried to get straight answers from, and it's difficult. It's really one of the more difficult things to get an answer on, because different people say different things about how long that should sit. So I think that that's something. But we have issues around that and instructional supplies, and then custodial supplies. So we're continuing to meet the request for the hand sanitizer in the classrooms, each of our classrooms should have a hand sanitizer dispenser, but also the cleaning supplies, you know, we were misusing the term wipes before. It's really the idea, and I think you probably saw this if you were on any of the tours, both people in the halls, the additional custodial crew, cleaning the doorway handles and things like that. But then we also had, we watched the folks come in and then clean off the cafeterias, right, by spraying, and then going, spraying the entire area, and then coming back and wiping it down. So again, I think that that's, we have not fully staffed the supplemental staff, we're still missing some people for that, so those are things that we're continuing to work on with the outside contractor. The HVAC system, so this one, I think, and this is my own interpretation, but the no evidence, the high evidence of no evidence here, to my mind, points to the fact that the weather's been so great. We really have not had to rely on the HVAC in the buildings that have AC, you know, and we have, we talked about this a little bit ago, that the outside dampers have been on full, even in buildings with outside air, the air has been relatively cool outside for the most part, and so we've been able to draw in a lot of fresh air. One of the things, and I'll talk about this towards the end, is one of the things we're looking for right now from the state is some more guidance around what we're going to do when the weather begins to turn colder, and what has to happen to that mixture of outside air. We also are continuing to work on the ventilation systems, the filters have begun to arrive. I talked with Mr. Papa George earlier this week, well, that was yesterday, right, Monday? And they're working to, with outside contractors now to get the, we just went into a PM program, they're going to start now putting those filters into place, cleaning the filters, and then putting them on a regular cleaning schedule before they have to be replaced. So that's just something that we are still in the process of, and I think that this, to my mind, is one of the big question marks we have going forward, particularly because to some degree, we're not where we need to be, but also because some things are still unknown around what this is going to look like as the weather begins to turn. The self-monitoring, excuse me, I'm just struggling to turn the page here. So again, this seems to be working, you know, this is what we were asking, there really is no evidence, so we're basing it on the fact of, as Ms. Mitchell said, there's less visits to the nurse, so that tells us that kids who are not feeling well are being kept home. We have, you know, as of before today, we had no positive cases, we have a positive case, but that worked. That particular person didn't come into school because they identified themselves as ill and were tested. So we think overall this is working, we hear stories that somebody's sending their kid in sick, but we're not seeing necessary evidence of that. So I think that there are some concerns that this is happening, there's always going to be some concerns about this happening, I think, but overall, I would say the response of the community has been very strong of accepting this, and accepting the responsibility that we all have to keep each other well. So in talking now with others in other school systems, and looking at this own data, and listening to the comments that many of the administrators and teachers leaders made, these are the types of things we've got to think about for moving to a full reopening. And I didn't, I just bulleted these, I didn't necessarily think about these in any particular order, but if we're going to go to full reopening, we have to have a better understanding, and we have to build trust and security around this reducing the six-foot distance to less than six feet, to a three-foot minimum, right? We've got to work with our families, our teachers, our students, to make that a safe distance. So how might we do that? So one of the things we might have to do is, we might have to think about barriers that go on desks, as well as in lunchroom spaces. You know, if the three-foot distance at lunch is still going to be the minimum, we're going to need to place those kind of tri-fold polycarbonate barriers around students, so that they, you know, that's reducing, it's mitigating their interactions. We're going to have to think about potentially doing that in the classrooms, if the desks are going to become within three feet of each other. As we've talked about on many occasions, the addition of mitigation strategies beyond the mask is, helps to reduce the spread of the disease, right? So the mask alone is one thing, but the mask and the barriers is another thing, the mask and the shield, whatever it might be, the Plexiglas barrier, whatever those other things might be, those are the things we're going to have to consider. So I will tell you that none of this is, nobody's giving those away, so I had Mr. Papa George price out what it would be essentially if we got 10,000 of those polycarbonate tri-fold barriers, and that's just about $289,000. Okay? So I just, to be clear and transparent about what we're talking about, these are things we'd have to do. we'd have to, as a district, have commitment to. If we're going to be doing that, if we're going to have these barriers now, that's an additional thing that's going to need to be cleaned. We're also going to have additional students in the classrooms, additional students in the halls, additional students in the bathrooms. So we're going to need additional custodial staff. I put that there as something that we have to think about or as needed. I think it's something that we would need to do more than Mike just put it on a slide. But I think that it's, you know, if we're going to have more kids in the building and we're going to have to be monitoring the cleanliness issue, then we're going to have to think about additional custodial staff. For the HVAC, we're going to have to replace all the air filters, which we're in the process of doing. We're going to need updated reports on the air circulation. And as I said, we're going to need the state guidance on expectations for the winter, right? And the colder weather and how we're going to address that issue. And if we're going to have to reduce the intake of outside air because it's too cold, what burden in a sense does that place on the existing system, right? And how does that help or hurt the number of cycles of air in a room in the course of an hour? We're going to have to look at the ability to livestream from all classrooms. So here's the, here's kind of the, one of the fundamental issues, right? We've, we are at, as we've talked about, we are at or near at capacity in the Remote Learning Academy. Based on the understanding we have now from families and decisions to go into hybrid, there are people in hybrid who are comfortable in hybrid but would not be comfortable in full remote, I mean, excuse me, full in-person. Now, that's based on September data and that might change when we get to October, November, you know, based on factors to some degree beyond our control. But we do have an expectation that if we were to change the options from hybrid and remote to full in-person and remote, we'll see people in hybrid either want to go to full in-person, or we'll see people in remote who might then choose full in-person. But we also are going to see people in hybrid who want to go back into remote. And it's unlikely that it'll be an even number of people on each side. So how do we address the issue that we're going to have to do full reopening, or excuse me, that we're going to have more people who want remote than the Remote Learning Academy can accommodate? And again, the other thing I'm going to put in here is this. If we're thinking about, as I'm proposing, that we're in this for the next two years, then we have to have the ability to livestream from all classrooms. Now, I've been talking all summer that I don't like this idea, and it's September, and I still don't like this idea. This is, this is to my mind, and I don't like it from an instructional point of view. I think it solves a number of logistical issues, but from an instructional point of view, I will tell you that in my conversations with others in my role, nobody is really thrilled with the way live streaming is working because of the way it is impacting the in-class instruction, particularly for the students in class. All right? So I think we have to be really clear about that this is not a quick-term solution. And, you know, so I put it forward as an idea, and I will tell you that, and this is rough numbers, but we have roughly 900 classrooms in the district. So we're looking at a couple of systems right now. We're going to be piloting a couple of systems at each of the two high schools. They range in price. The top-line type of a system could cost up to $30, $200, right? Now, I'm not, per room. So I'm not, I'm not saying that we have to do that. I'm just saying these are the things we're going to look at. The low end is around $2,100. Right? So somewhere between $2 million and $2.7 million, closer to three, we're going to be in a range of having to support this information, this technology. All right? And that's just the technology because if we go to do this, and again, I'm going to come back to where I started, I hope, ultimately, the goal is to have a system that is meeting the needs, the instructional needs of students. I hear you very clearly when you raise concerns about the academics, right? By no means do I think that that's inconsequential. That's why we're here ultimately. So we're going to have to think about the, an intensive supportive professional learning system for our staff in order to make this happen. And that may be work that we, takes place, you know, or we may run academies over the summer, you know, in order to support teachers through this process and help them do this, which is additional budget dollars. But that's what we're ultimately going to need, bless you, so that we have the flexibility, again, to go back and forth between learning models as the health data tells us. So the last thing I want to say to you, and it's not on the slide, but over the past two weeks, Dr. Parrish, Dr. Zavichansek, Ms. DC, I know Ms. McCusie and his staff, myself, the program directors have had, the principals have all been involved in multiple conversations with our teachers. And I think just about every afternoon, we've met with representatives of the high school, the middle school, the elementary teachers, the special ed staff. Our teachers already are in a very difficult state because they are absolutely committed to doing the best by the students. They're struggling with the technology. They're struggling with trying to get students in front of them supported, the students at home supported. They're struggling with the planning that that's required to do. And, you know, again, our commitment is to work them through that and support them through that. Ultimately, they want, they take, they're just so proud to be fair-filled teachers and to work here and to take care of the fair-filled kids that this is, this is where they're struggling, their ability to fulfill that promise. And, you know, and I, as much as I say to them, as much as the principals say to them, we all say to them, you got to take care of yourselves, you got to, they still are working tremendous amount of hours and they're still not paying attention to their families. And I don't, well, I have tremendous admiration for them. You know, I think any of us who know teachers personally outside of this district, they're all in that position. All of our teachers, I think, are just stretched now to trying to do the absolute best in conditions that are really difficult. So ultimately, we have to continue to support them in the needs that they have. So this is what I, the last thing that I would say is this, before I take questions is, so in order to start moving forward, what I'm proposing is that we, we bring, we reform, we resuscitate the reopening schools committee to begin to look at how we approach these issues. I would say that, you know, we're, ultimately, the goal is to get all students back, but we need to start, we should start even with smaller cohorts of students as quickly as possible, you know, whether, again, that's expanding the pool of special education students at any particular grade or across the school system, whether it's the EL students. When we start to think about, we talked earlier about the engagement issue, and I mentioned, you know, I don't know if I mentioned, but I will pull out McKinley right here. McKinley is having concerns with students disengaging. Do we have to think about an extended day for some of those families and to get those students in to replace learning loss that's happened? So there's a few ways to do this. It's not like we have to necessarily do just one or the other, but we do need to be mindful of maintaining these mitigation strategies while we do it and as we ultimately work towards the larger goal of getting everybody back. So, so that's where I am. Excuse me, if there's any questions.
Ms. Telly?
Thank you. I am excited to get kids back in school, five days. I appreciate, I think the tours were very helpful. I was very impressed with a lot of the things that I saw. I thought the schools looked great. The cleaning was outstanding with everything we saw going on today at lunch. And I can see the concerns. I understand that this is probably going to have to move slowly to get back to a full return. I do believe in the metrics that we've always been in favor of in-person learning, and I'd, I'd like everybody to remember that as I know we can all worry about what happens in a week from now or two weeks from now, but ultimately, that will paralyze us from ever making a decision to move forward, and we are in this position right now to move forward and we should move forward. I would just make a plea for our most vulnerable population and get them back in the school first because the feedback that I have gotten from our sped population, and I understand that we've got the CLC kids back and I'm grateful for that, but it has always bothered me that we've divided that population and deemed some kids worthy of the five-day and others not. And our largest population, our largest percentage of children in that population are learning disabled who require daily small group instruction, and they've been without it since March. And it is just as important for those kids to be back five days. And I'm not exactly sure how that would work. I don't know, maybe it's a, you know, their parents, if they, if they choose, if they, you know, want it. But I just desperately want those kids and those families to get back as soon as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Telly. Any other questions for Mike? Ms. Lieber?
Thank you, Mr. Cummings, for that update. I'm going to just, I, I agree with what Ms. Telly said about prioritizing the return for our high-need students. Just want to reiterate that. But I was wondering in the interim, what, I've been asking, I think, this question every, every meeting, if we've expanded in-person services for students receiving itinerant services and other students who are not our highest need but still require quite a few hours of related services a week.
Hello again. Rob McCusie, Executive Director of Special Education. I appreciate your sentiments and your comments from both of you. I can give you an update on where we are because we too, you know, the guidance provided by the state on Addendum III was pretty clear for who our student with high needs were and to prioritize our students with high needs for, you know, the maximum amount of in-person learning. So we've been able to do that. I think we've done a good job getting our CLCs up and running. Now what we're doing, and we're going to finalize our plan on Thursday, the coordinators are meeting with all the schools, the principals, to discuss the next level of students with significant needs. And there is some criteria to do that that's consistent so we can be consistent across the district in how we are identifying that tier-two student that we're calling them. And whether or not that's a good term or not, it's just the next level of student that need that increased in-person learning. And then, you know, I have had, again, the pleasure to talk to many parents, and I agree. Some students continue to struggle in the remote learning model as well as in the hybrid learning model. So we are on a case-by-case basis, talking with families, meeting with teams, and adjusting accordingly. It's an ongoing process. Staffing has not been the easiest thing to find, so we just want to make sure that all the pieces in place we can deliver on. We don't want to overpromise something and then not be able to deliver.
I know you guys are working so hard. So are our children who are only receiving itinerant services currently getting any in-person service hours?
The students who are participating in the hybrid learning model, students with disabilities in hybrid learning, you know, the guidance given to teams is to make the best decisions since students are only in school for half the day for an elementary student, for example, or two days for a middle school or high school student. We're telling teams to make decisions, prioritize services that students need, and, you know, to the greatest extent possible, provide as many special ed services in person and then, you know, a minimum of 50% in person or more as determined appropriate, and then, you know, live video or asynchronously.
You know, I should have been clearer. I was thinking about our preschoolers who are not otherwise enrolled in ECC, let's say.
I would say our preschool, our preschool model right now is, is probably the smoothest of all our models because students are in school four days a week. There's an AM cohort that comes four days a week. There's a PM cohort that comes four days a week.
Even for kids only receiving itinerant services?
Itinerant services for preschool right now are delivered remotely.
Thank you. Can I ask one other, just one other comment? Is there any consideration to adding more teachers to the reopening committee? It seemed like some feedback we got felt like teachers had wished they'd had more representation on that committee.
I think we have to, yeah, I would certainly be open to that. I think we have to also be careful though that, that we have some type of representational model for other groups as well. I don't know of the way it's structured in the beginning. It's a different, the committee will be different in its outcome as well because while we were really working along with the state guidelines this summer, like, you know, to some degree, this was, it was preordained, it was just how we were going to do it. Now we're talking about a little bit more wide-open field. So even this consideration of, you know, how we're going to bring maybe smaller groups back or certain gray levels back first allows for more variance than we actually had this summer. So we'll have to look at that, yeah. I'm certainly open to it.
Mr. Peterson?
Thank you. And I want to echo some of the sentiments from other board members, saying thank you very much for letting us tour facilities. For the public, we, many of us toured, I believe, seven schools during school hours over the past week from high school down to the elementary level, and it was, it was really eye-opening in terms of seeing what, you know, building-level challenges, you know, small stuff like, you know, the bottle fillers and, you know, spacing in bathrooms and classrooms and such. It was really extremely helpful and I want to thank all the staff and administrators that led us on those tours. But, you know, one thing that I think it would be useful for the public to hear is a discussion about reopening challenges as it relates to staffing. I know Ms. Pittco asked you if, in a situation where we go back full five-day, are we able to staff the Remote Learning Academy appropriately? You know, some other questions that we received, some other board member questions talking about the number of, you know, 20 high school classes that are currently being taught by a teacher at home. If we do, I guess my fundamental question is, if we do transition back to full five-day and, as you say, we may be transitioning back and forth between various models throughout the year, what estimate can you make of how that's going to impact staffing? Will there be more teachers, you know, requesting accommodations in that case? Are we going to have to look for long-term subs? I see that as being kind of a big choke point in any, in any transition shift.
Yes, thank you. And we'll, we'll talk a little bit later, Ms. DC come up and talk more about staffing specifically, but to your, to that question, we do know that, that as Ms. DC was meeting with teachers who had requested leave and were simply just had concerns about coming back, that to her estimation, about 40 to 50 staff were comfortable coming back, or were made more comfortable coming back based on the hybrid model, that the cohorting, that the reduced hours, that those types of things helped them address some of the medical issues that they had in their own, you know, in their own concerns, or whether they were concerned of members of their immediate family, because it wasn't always just the person themselves, right? So that's something we have So that's something we have to consider. And I think, to some degree, you know, and you saw what happened in Trumbull when they had to quarantine quite a number of staff, the inability to supply substitutes. And again, she'll talk more about this in a little bit. But we are struggling now, Mr. Mancusi just referenced, trying to find staff that we often don't have issues with, like, for example, elementary teachers. And I think this is a statewide issue, that so many people have been called upon, you know, the state will tell you that there's an awful lot of people certified in the state of Connecticut. Those people have chosen either not to work or nobody wants them to work, you know, quite honestly. So we're struggling with that as a staffing issue. And I think as we head into, you know, if people get ill, just even just cold and flu, we're gonna have, again, all districts, I think, are gonna struggle with this issue.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Max Canelli?
Thank you. When you talk about the reconstituting the reopening committee, do you see that, I mean, the notion of a reopening committee, but do you see that being quite different from the summer in terms of, I can see some things being appropriate district level, but others would be on a building-by-building basis? And that's especially, you know, where you'd be getting more of that teacher or, you know, the people, because what one building needs to do to address it can be quite different from another as we saw in our tours. So is that how you see that unfolding?
I do. I think when we worked this summer, you know, the reopening committee and then the executive directors put together the plan, and then we kind of turned it over to the schools. So it was sequential. I think what I would much prefer to do, and the other big issue with that was too, because we spent so much time in logistics, as I've talked about, we weren't able to do the timing with the instruction that we needed to do. So what I'd much rather do now is do it the way it should be done, which is, what is the plan? And concurrently, how does this play out in the buildings? Let's address each of these building issues. So let's just, I'll just play out a sequence. First grade, we want to bring first grade back full-time. So let's, working with each of the 11 elementary schools, what does that look like? Where are the rooms? How are we gonna be able to deal with the cafeteria issues and properly make sure that there's space for eating, right? What other rooms are available in each of the schools? Each have their variances. But at the same time, let's provide the professional learning for the first-grade teachers in order to make that happen. Because let's say we'd say, that's the first place we're gonna put cameras, and I'm not saying that, not saying that. But let's just say that this is, so how are we gonna support those teachers so that they have comfort level in working with that kind of interactive environment at the same time they've got students in front of them? We have to do these things concurrently rather than, as we did this summer, which was more sequential. And I think didn't, in the long run, it was probably needed, but it didn't work out well.
Thank you. And would you say with the cameras, though, that there's a prioritizing for that? I guess, first of all, I'm not clear on why our elementary schools, which has its own separate remote learning academy, why do you see them needing cameras? Or is it that you just see that as secondary to the high schools?
No, I would say, you know, I think we have to upgrade. The first thing we have to do is we have to make sure that the high schools are adequately supplied so that they're able to do the work that they're already doing. And, you know, and I think, to some degree, our teachers have trying different things, they're buying their own microphones, they're doing all kinds of different things. And we need to take that burden off of them and spend the money to do it right at the high school. But I'm thinking that, what I'm concerned about is, I think we're, when we've talked about this, we all have this concern, that if we were going back to the first-grade example for a minute, if we decide we're gonna go full in-person first grade, there are gonna be first-grade families right now that aren't comfortable in hybrid, that may want to go to remote. And will they outnumber, let's say we, at the same time, we have people in remote who say, oh, that's great, I'll now take my kid out, I would like to take my kid out of remote. If we identify a transition period for these switches to occur, are we going, will the number going in a remote exceed the number coming out or wanting to go in a remote? And then, so how do we support those families if we, you know, if we're, because what I don't want to do is start adding additional class sizes there, not just because of the dollars, but because I don't think, starting a class mid-year, we don't do that, you know, it's just, it's not good for kids and families. It's difficult enough to transition from one teacher to the other, but I think we can overcome that hurdle. It's starting brand-new and going back to the staffing issue, I think, would be a concern.
Okay. Thank you. You brought up the professional learning. Have you, I sent you this question in one of those emails, but are you considering at all the notion of asking the board to change that June 1st full PD day and moving it to the fall? Seeing, obviously, you do have Election Day coming up, which is a full day of PD. But do you see there being a more immediate need for having that time so that staff can do exactly what you've described quite eloquently here needs to be done?
Thank you. I'm very open to that. I think that, you know, we put that June 1st date in for a reason, but, you know, like so many other things, right now, is that the best use of our time? And, you know, so I'm very open to that. And I just think it's, you know, you had mentioned perhaps Columbus Day. I would want to identify the right date so that we can make best use of the time. So I don't know if that would be the right date or not, but yes, I'm open to that idea.
Again, I had just mentioned Columbus Day only thinking, at least that would be something which, if you're springing on parents, many of them would have off, so it might be less impactful. But I'll just, you know, signal my own willingness that that date might need to be moved, and I think it could be put to very good use. One thing I was curious about in the slideshow, under face coverings, it says more mask breaks needed. And I was wondering, based on what? What feedback made someone say that? And was that particular to a certain level?
I think that that, this is based on other conversations. I think that that's an issue I've heard from probably most of the secondary level. I think at elementary, they've been, and I apologize if I'm not reflecting people's actual experiences, but from what I understand, at the elementary level, they've been relatively well-organized. You know, you'll go to the schools and you'll look out the windows, and, you know, and you'll see small little heads bobbing by, six feet apart, without their masks. At the secondary level, particularly at the middle school with the 45-minute class, you know, I've heard from the middle school teachers that it's difficult to kind of schedule that. You know, it's only a 45-minute class, you go outside, it's 10 minutes, who has to do it? You know, and there's like, well, I'm not giving up, I'm making this up, but I'm not giving up math, you know? So I think these are issues that are more problematic at the secondary level right now than they are necessary at the elementary. But I think it's just something that we continue to work on. And it's definitely been compounded on the more hot, humid days.
Is there any thought to surveying the students to see how, if, it's one thing for adults to perceive a need for it, I mean, you might logically think, if your day is this long, you're going to need that, but it's something else to actually ask them. And therefore, you know how much time to spend on that issue.
Yeah, we certainly should. I don't think that we've done enough actually capturing student voice yet in any of this. I think that's just a general issue, particularly at the secondary level. Teachers, though, and administrators will talk about, you know, as the day kind of goes on, this starts to drag, and there's a lot of that, which I think we all do, but that's where you kind of hear it. But I absolutely agree with you that having teachers, students, excuse me, have some voice in this would be important.
Okay. Thank you. And I think that was it for me right now. Thank you.
Mr. Asa, followed by Mr. Peterson?
Getting back to the last slide that you had, you mentioned a couple of things, and I appreciate you bringing up the costs because I think it needs to be put out there that, you know, if our goal is ultimately to get kids back in the building, which is the best place for them to be, that we're, you know, we're over $3 million just on two things that you mentioned, cameras and barriers. So when I think cameras, I'm thinking about all these cameras, and I'm thinking about how in the world are they gonna broadcast? You know, is our bandwidth gonna be enough? And then that's another investment that we may have to make. So I just wanted to point out that, you know, these costs, and you talk about potentially two years of this, and people might say, oh, my God, two years. But, yeah, but two years could be, you know, full in-person with back and forth based on numbers, but we could also be forced to have remote learning as an option for students that aren't comfortable for this year and next year. And I think, you know, I appreciate you bringing the cameras into the mix because of that, because I would look at that more as a, you know, initially, I thought, oh, this is a short-term solution, but this may need to be a longer-term solution. So it's a longer-term investment if it's spread out over a few years. And likely, based on these numbers and where we already are with our budget, I just throw it out there that, you know, we may have to go, you know, to the town for help with some of this stuff. And, you know, if the push is for us to get back in the buildings, we need to beware of the budgetary impacts and how we're gonna work with the town to meet the needs of our students and our budget because there's just not a lot of fat to cut to get $3 million when we're already facing a potential $1 million-plus shortfall.
Mr. Peterson?
Thank you. To Mr. Asa's point, I just, we can talk about this more later, but I will say that Mr. Cummings brought up the cost estimates for cameras in the last week's Board of Finance meeting, talking about the 900 classrooms and the top of the line and bottom of the line. So some of those questions were asked, and some of that information has started to get out there. But obviously, it's gonna be, need to be a conversation that we're going to have to have and really get into the weeds about. I just want to ask a quick clarifying question about a kind of model shift. Recently, we, you said that we were holding off on processing requests from between hybrid and remote learning. And I just want to make sure, for the benefit of the public, that if we're talking about switching between hybrid and a full-five-day model, that you anticipate during that transition allowing the possibility for families to switch between remote and whatever the in-person option is? And vice versa?
That's correct.
Thank you. That's all I wanted.
Any other questions? Mrs. Max Canelli?
So I left off the most important question here. I even put a box and stars around it. What do you see as a timeline? Very, very rough, nothing committed, you know, but a step above hypothetical. You know, I think you've already addressed the needs of high-need learners, we've talked a great deal about K through 2 and beyond, but what do you see as a fuzzy timeline?
Fuzzy timeline? I'd like to, you know, I'd like to, with, between Mr. Mancusi's work and our work with, like, say McKinley or EL students in general, I'd like to identify a group of students or cohort or cadre of students that we begin to make plans for within the next month, you know, within the next month. So I'm hoping that we can be able to do something with all the other metrics staying safe, that hopefully by the end of October, we'll be able to start to think about a next level group of kids. Now, some of that would be dependent on the size of the group, you know, how big an impact it would be. That's why I'm saying, if we were to think about, even with Mr. Mancusi's model, for example, if we were to think about one level, for example, to start with, I think that if we can, you know, one of our operating principles that I try to preach is, you know, you go small to go big, go slow to go fast. I think that if we can learn from what we have to do with one group, it'll accelerate the process with others. And we might be able to do a couple of different groups the next time we go through this, if that makes sense. You know, like, you know, the idea that, we heard earlier that some people, well, it was actually when we were out today, right? We heard that some districts are doing, like, grade nine, they do grade six, they do those transition grades. If we were to take on something like that, which would be part of the function of the committee to identify who's next, as it were, you might be able to do a different cadre at every level. Those are just things that we have to consider.
And then, as a follow-up to that, the other option beyond the bringing full back is looking at the current hybrid model and altering it as a hybrid model. For example, in the high school, how successful are those Wednesdays? Should we be considering a 3-2-2-3, you know, switch? I've thrown out the idea, since somebody, that overeager person in IT who identified all those kids as A1, A2, B1, B2, and got everybody all in a tizzy, that actually presents an interesting possibility of, what if we brought three of those minor cohorts a day as opposed to A and B? It could be A1, A2, B1 today, B2 stays home. I mean, those are ways of not full-in-person return, but alterations to the hybrid model. Where do you see that discussion taking place, if at all?
Well, I think it's a really interesting discussion. I mean, the idea of, you know, I would say that, I'm a little hesitant to change any of the models right now because people are just getting under their feet, but the idea of how, like, if you were to think about, with a group of identified special education students, that there be a group, a cohort that would come two days after school a week and another group that comes two different other days after school that week? You know, that you start to think about how you might be able to bring some variance into those students. Those are all things I think we have to, we have to look at. There are, the possibility, elementary, of a group that stays in the afternoon or comes early in the morning and how that might look. Those are all things I think we have to put into play and how that would essentially start to produce a different cohort, as it were, with supplemental services. I just, those are different kind of menu options that we have to play out.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, and I apologize if this question was asked. I stepped out of the room for a second. Was there any discussion about how busing will be handled for a full return? Just in terms, I know we had back, like, it seems like years ago, when we were having a conversation that we'd need, you know, like, 70 more buses or something like that. So, I mean, I didn't know if, you know, the experiences that have been taking place with transportation as of now perhaps have changed that or just, you know, are there ways to really kind of get a sense of how many people would actually put their children on a bus? And I could also see, as with concerns about some parents who have chosen hybrid in the classroom but might not be happy about full, they may be putting their child on a bus because it's hybrid, but they may say, you know what, I'm gonna drive them if it's full. So I just didn't know if they're, first of all, just what you were planning for that and also just kind of what kind of outreach we might be able to do with families to kind of really see, you know, if we go this way, will that change your decision? You know, that might kind of help determine what we'll really need to be able to have transportation.
Well, I think certainly we'd have to resurvey parents, given these options, given that the options are changing. If you look at the state guidance, if you're going full in-person, correspondingly, you have full in-person on the bus. So it's two on a seat again, you know? And I would recognize that a lot of parents would probably not feel comfortable that close. So would it drive more people to, you know, to drive their students? I think those are things we'd have to, we'd certainly have to survey parents about to figure out exactly what the logistics would be, because we're not gonna be able to get more buses. Even if we had the money, we wouldn't be able to get more buses, never mind more drivers.
Well, right. And I guess that's kind of part of my point, too, is that what would happen, I mean, if we can't get the buses, I just, you know, how would that work? Or is it just, would we just kind of assume that parents would say, I don't feel comfortable having my child on a bus?
Yeah, I think we probably could assume that. I think we'd also see, I mean, there are districts that are going now full in-person because they have nearly 20% of their kids in remote. So, you know, by that alone, they're able to significantly reduce the death, or increase the desk space. It may not be six feet, but it's probably a minimum of four. So if you see a greater migration to remote, you're gonna also better support the in-person and then also the busing, right? But this is, this has been our issue all along, is correctly, honestly guessing at what that might be. That's the difficult thing. Because people don't actually commit to the plans on paper, right? And they actually know what it is. So when you put out the suppositions, people can give you an indication, but until you you actually map it all out, people are reluctant to, they may change their minds. So I think those are just some of the things we have to, at some point, you make some assumptions and hope they hold up. And that is, we haven't been able to do that really well. And I know we're not alone in that. So I think, well, a hybrid is a safe way for some people. Either the full in-person or the full remote is going to offer people options perhaps more extreme that actually make it easier to make a decision.
Right. But I guess, and just to clarify, though, you know, in terms of the costs, you know, we do not foresee transportation being additional cost if we go to full, simply because there are no buses for us to get.
Right. And we actually should see some reduction.
Well, right, exactly. Because I know that the additional costs have come through the hybrid, so theoretically, there could be some savings, but at the end of the day, it's not going to be an additional cost.
Yes. I want to, I just want to say one thing again, for anybody who's listening or sharing this information with people. I want to be really clear to anybody listening. What we're talking about right now is the ideas that we're putting forward, and nothing is, you know, I want to reemphasize the idea of the committee and the staff working together to identify what these pieces will be, so that I know that the staff are just becoming comfortable with the hybrid model to some degree in certain places, and we'll be working with the staff. If we don't increase trust first, then we don't have anything else, right? So that, people just need to understand that that's the first thing we're going to work on, is making sure that people feel comfortable and safe in, as we talk about where the plans are, and providing the, and part of that certainly is the social distancing and all the other logistics. But it's really, a lot of it is the professional learning that people need to be able to, be able to work in that environment. So I just want to make sure that people understand that that's the task. And we won't go, you know, we'll go forward with staff around this.
Anything else, Jess? Ms. Jacobson, your hand up.
Yeah, I was just wondering if anyone from Fairfield Public Schools has taken any field trips to see, you know, live in action other grade levels or grade spans or districts that are working, you know, at a higher capacities than we are. Maybe that's problematic, I'm not sure, but I think having a phone call, you know, is different than walking the building, right? I mean, as we all know, is visiting, seeing things on paper and walking the buildings are two different things. So, I mean, there are plenty of schools that are, so I just wasn't sure if it was an idea to maybe actually just take a look at how lunch is working or that are doing it at this point.
That's something that the superintendents have talked about. I think we're, honestly, none of us have had time yet to do that, but I think it's more than the superintendent. So, for example, if we were to think about, I'm going to go back to my grade one example, right, that we go look at Narwhal and we look at Greenwich to see how that's happening in the spaces they use. Take our elementary principals there, maybe a couple of the EPF so that they have an understanding of how the schedule works and those types of things. Absolutely.
Ms. Rotelli?
So, kind of piggybacking on what Jessica was just saying, I know you had said that in some districts it was easier because the, when you had a choice between remote or full person, say 20% picked remote, and it made it much easier to go back five days. So is there a chance that we could just put out a survey that says, you have to make a choice tomorrow, what would you choose? So we can get an idea of exactly how many families would go from one to the other. Because if we do have an increase in remote, and I know this is going to create a staffing issue, on the other hand, if we have teachers or staff who might be reluctant to go to five days because they're just getting comfortable with hybrid and they're uncomfortable with increasing their class size, if they knew their class size would be significantly lower because there was an increase to remote, then it might make this whole process faster. You know, and I understand why this is going to probably take longer to get our kids back five days, but it's making me slightly uncomfortable that we're talking about forming a committee and maybe having, you know, the potential return of some sped students or ELL students happening four weeks from now, and then we'll see how that goes, and then we'll, like, this could take the rest of the year to get a gradual kids back five days. I want to try to, you know, make it as fast as possible with still trying to ease into it. I know that sounds completely contradictory, but I just wonder if that, if that immediate survey of picking something could make this, could just cut out a lot of time.
Yes. And the survey, I mentioned earlier that Ms. Clark's been working on a update of the survey we put out in May. The draft of that I saw today has questions around that. You know, not asking people to actually make the commitment, but say, if we go, you know, full in-person, where would you want to go full in-person? Would you want to go in remote? So we're going to be asking those questions.
I just feel like the last survey, when families were like, would you do remote? Would you do full? Would you do this or that? It sort of confused some people. I was just, I just think the simple pick remote, pick five day, which one would you choose? It's, it would be a much easier and clear-cut decision for families to make, and it would give us a very clear picture of where we may be able to go model-wise, staff-wise, and how quickly we could make that happen.
Ms. Ace?
Just sidetracking, looking at the clock, can we make a motion to extend the meeting to 11:40?
You making that motion?
I am.
A second. Ms. Jacobson, all in favor of extending the meeting to 11:30?
11:40.
11:40, sorry. Motion carries, 9-0. Jacobson? Any other questions? Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Cummings, and I echo my board members' comments about thanking the building administrators that gave us those tours. It was, it was very helpful to see the plans in action and see the different challenges faced at each building. What was a challenge at one building was not a challenge at the other. And I just, for the board's sake, I want you to know that I am fully supporting, my goal is also to get kids back to full in-person. I maybe am a little bit more cautious in my approach, partially because I'm looking more on the other end. I fear that if we bring back too many kids at once, that we might push the numbers and fast-track to full remote for everyone, which is what I think that no one really wants right now. Trying to keep as many kids in the building for as long as possible is, is really what I'm looking at right now, and looking at providing some stability for our families, for our staff, after, what has it been, six, eight months of just instability, and just to kind of get everybody in the groove as we continue to do this work. So, thank you, and look forward to the continued conversations. Moving on to the approval of minutes, the Board of Education approved 9/8/20 Board of Ed regular meeting minutes. Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Ms. Pitco, any questions or comments? I'm seeing none. All in favor? Motion carries, 9-0. Superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. So at our last meeting, there were some questions around staffing, so that Ms. Deasy was asked to put together kind of an overview of the staffing situation we find ourselves in. And then there were a few questions generated by that that both she and Mr. Mancusi responded to. So I'd ask her to come forward, Ms. Deasy to come forward, and just to see if, answer any further questions the board might have, kind of give us a state of where we are, and hopefully where we're headed.
Hi, so I am Colleen Deasy, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have about the memo or where we are for staffing.
Does anybody have any questions right now? Ms. Jacobson?
Um, hi, Ms. Jacobson. Thank you for putting this together. And, you know, I guess my question is, is since these were, and maybe this is for Mrs. Munsel, I'm not sure, is how are we paying these people?
In the immediacy, we have hired them and we are treating them as staff. But where is the funding coming from is a question that would be for Ms. Munsel.
Yes. And while you're there, while you're there, Colleen, though, are you foreseeing the need for anything beyond this at this point? Or are you comfortable with this number? Or are you, just where are you at with this in general, and just in the context of this conversation and in relation to this memo?
So we are, we are two weeks into school at this point, over two weeks into school. And normally, two weeks into school, we are well-settled. And this year, we're not necessarily well-settled, like we usually are at this point in the year. So while I think that this is a very, very good ballpark, I don't want to commit that this is our final number for what we will need for staffing, because we really are still sorting out what the exact parameters are of the RLA, given that it's a brand-new school, and that we're trying to sort out how exactly students are going, and when, what schedules are going to be for special education services, and how that's going to work with the regular ed classes that are there. So there may be some slight changes, but this should be a good estimate of where we are going to land for the year.
Okay. I mean, I don't want to bring Mrs. Munsel up if you guys have questions on this memo, but I do just want to get to that point, at some point.
And I did ask that question. And Ms. Munsel's going to provide us not tonight, a budget update in October on how to handle the impact, this added expense of these staff members. Ms. Max Canelli?
Thank you. I was wondering, so the middle school staffing here, where we had to have the additional 13.4 FTE, and my question is, because I just have to believe this would have made things easier there, is that why was nothing like this discussed or explored for the high school? The idea of pull the full-remote learners out of that teacher's responsibility and let someone focus on them full-time, be an exclusive remote English high school teacher, social studies, et cetera, at least for some of the core classes?
Sure. So it was both discussed and explored on our end. The answer is really the, the team model in the middle school allows us to do this, because students are essentially enrolled in, and certainly with math and word language, there does become some, some different classes that students could be in. But for the most part, if you're in sixth grade, you're taking the same ELA social studies across the board. Once you get to high school, Dr. Parrish did look at how many different courses students were enrolled in, if they, if we looked at all the students who had opted to be all remote. And I forget, we did have an exact number, and it would have been impossible to staff, is the bottom line.
So, looking at the number of unique courses across the students that were, that opted for remote on the high school level, there were 238 different courses that would have need to have been provided to those students. And because of the graduation requirements on the high school level, that's another reason why we were not able to facilitate the same type of extracted RLA program that we did for the K-8. Just looking at individual English courses, for example, there were 28 different types of English, you know, variations of, between just regular English 9 versus AP classes. So those were some of the things that led to the decision that it was in the best interest of students making progress toward graduation to continue, to use the model that we implemented at the high school level.
And I guess I would just, knowing the difficulties that are now happening in the high, I mean, and we're committed to this year, and I understand that, but as Mr. Cummings references 21, 22, just the thought that the options presented to remote learners in the high school might need to be of a different nature next year, you know, and, you know, health and safety class for ninth and 10th graders, which is going towards that requirement. And it could have a full-time teacher who's just focused on, just putting out there early, because obviously, we're only a couple of months away from them putting together, of course, a study guide for the high school classes. And so I just think that would have been something that would have helped a lot at this point. But thank you for answering that. I was, I was wondering about that. Additionally, I don't know, Ms. Deasy, if, have we contacted recent retirees about possibly stepping in as subs? I mean, I assume you've tapped into all these groups, but, and yet I have to ask anyway.
Yes, I think they're sick of hearing from us by now. We have, we've tapped into several recent retirees. Many of them retired simply, you know, we did have a few more retirements than we had budgeted for, because people kind of looked around at the school year and said, I have my time and I'm ready to be done. So we did get some very polite, but very firm, no-thank-yous when we reached out to those folks. And our recruiting efforts, I can't stress enough that we, we have subs and we have coverage. A lot of the coverage that we do have across schools is because teachers are taking FTE overages. And so people are taking on an extra class or two across departments. So when you have someone who is a 1.2, and they go out, that then has an even bigger impact on our sub-coverage needs, right? So we are covered at this point. I know I had an update for you today. At this point, we're covered up to, I believe, our only remaining vacancy that we really are struggling to find someone for is a part-time special education teacher at Ward. Other than that, we have, we have mostly found subs or found teachers who are agreeing to take FTE overages. And our subs that we have found, we are, we have gotten very creative with our recruiting efforts. A lot of spouses and retired parents are being recruited to come in.
As a follow-up to that, when a teacher is out, either because of quarantining or sniffles, okay, I'm not talking about profound illness, are we considering doing something whereby they still teach the class remotely and we need a para, a volunteer, I don't want to say a babysitter, but someone who's in the classroom in terms of discipline and...
Yes, and we've been doing that, and we're going to be looking at it more, especially for these two-week quarantines that pop up, or someone is hopefully going to be healthy for the entirety of it and wants to work. It certainly is going to give more continuity also to the students who are in that class than to have just a sort of random substitute. Thank you.
Ms. Jacobson?
I'm just curious, are a majority of these working from home, or is it a combo, or coming in the building, or just?
Of teachers working in the RLA. Most of them are working from home. We do have some people who are coming into their classroom, especially in the elementary schools where we ended up collapsing several rooms. Teachers had already had their space set up or were working on that. So they are coming in to still feel like they're a part of their school community there.
Ms. Ace?
With regards to subs, just a curious question about recruitment. Do you find with other towns, I believe Westport just raised their sub rate, I read recently, do you find that, that that's playing into it, or is it mostly just hard to find people, period?
Hard to find people at all. And I would add that I did have some communication with my counterparts in our surrounding districts, and we're pretty smack in the middle of average for our subpay. We're all right in the same ballpark.
Any other questions, Ms. Ace? Ms. Jacobson?
Just one more question, it's not for Colleen, but operationally, so I know that we've hired all of these new staff to service the Remote Learning Academy. So I'm just wanting to know, maybe this is to Mr. Cummings, have we been able to appropriately equip all of these teachers with what they need in order to deliver the instruction that you and we expect to be delivered to our remote learners at this time? So in other words, do we have an inventory, and this is really just a question across the board, not just for remote, but do we have an inventory of what we need or don't have? I just want to know if all these people have what they need to adequately teach at home, since most of them are home, and not necessarily accessing stuff in the building a lot, to... since most of them are home, and not necessarily accessing stuff in the building a lot, to do the job that we want them and that our kids deserve for them to be able to do? So, just an idea on if they've been equipped.
They have been, and they will continue to be as they go through the year. I think that, listening to meeting yesterday, and the program directors at the elementary level, we're continuing to gather materials from collapsed sections at the elementary school, getting those to, Ms. Roxby's, you know, I think has arranged some home deliveries, and then we're continuing to work with, students will no doubt have drop-off periods or pickup periods during the year, where they're going to pick up a new book or something that they're working on. So, that's a continuing process, Ms. Roxby and the program directors, doctors have a chance that have been involved with to support the Remote Learning Academy, and I'm answering the elementary, but this is a secondary issue, middle school issue as well.
Any other questions for Ms. Deasy? Thank you. Anything else to report?
Yeah, I want to talk about football. So, I just want to give the board an update on where we are with football. So, as you're well aware, I think, at this point, and I've been following or sharing with you the updates from the CIAC and the Department of Public Health, the, ultimately, the Department of Public Health at the state has basically come down on the fact that they don't believe that 11-on-11 tackle football is a safe activity. So, in conversation with our athletic directors, and, but they did propose, let me just take a step back, they did propose a seven-on-seven passing league type of format. And I know that our athletic directors, along with other athletic directors and principals in the FCIC, are exploring that option. So, in conversation yesterday with the, our two high school athletic directors and the headmasters and Dr. Parrish, we talked about the idea of supporting the seven-on-seven passing league. We are, I think, to a person, very concerned about these students, and, you know, the things that, not only that they're not able to participate in football, but that they've been kind of put through this process, that seems like, quite honestly, months on end. So, we will be going forward with that, there is, there is a plan in place that hopefully those teams will continue to play, teams in the regional format that FCIC has set up, so the two high school teams in Fairfield, if the Bridgeport team, I think they're going to try to put together, I believe it's also St. Joe's, Fairfield Prep, I'm forgetting somebody, but it's within our immediate area, so we won't be traveling across Fairfield County to Greenwich, for example. Everybody's playing with the six or seven teams that are closest to them, and that could exist at a varsity JV and a freshman-level teams. And that pretty much is a, you know, the equipment essentially needed for that is a helmet. Now, I'm aware that, that there are clubs forming, private club teams forming across the county as well, not just in Fairfield County, but across the state, and we are, I met with Ms. Deasy this afternoon to talk about that further, because there are liability issues around that, that, you know, these private clubs are forming to compete against each other in the traditional 11-on-11 tackle format, tackle football format. So, we're going to meet again, I think, on Thursday with the athletic directors and the high school headmasters, just to finalize this, but that is something we are not going to participate in. We are, we are concerned about the liability issues that come with that, primarily, you know, that's the number-one thing. We, as you well know, have followed Department of Public Health, Town Health Guidance all along, and, and so that remains our primary issue. So, we are very concerned about the kids, we want to offer something to the students, the student athletes, so that they can participate, but that will be the seven-on-seven league. And again, we're going to have one more meeting, hopefully one more meeting on this Thursday with Ms. Deasy, just to answer any last questions, and then we'll be putting out some formal announcement. And meanwhile, at the high schools, the athletic directors are beginning to work with their coaching staff to form these seven-on-seven teams. I don't know if there's any questions around that.
Ms. Jacobson?
I don't have any question on the football piece of it, but I was wondering if we would be finding out about parental attendance, or just student attendance at these things, or just what your, you know, I know it's up to you in terms of, you know, there's no state requirement around this, so just what you're going to be allowing or not allowing.
For athletic contests in general?
Yeah.
Yes, so, thank you. So, yes, the FCIC had put out an idea that each student athlete would get two lanyards, essentially, for their parents, and then there was some conversation, well, you know, in certain family circumstances, students might require four lanyards. Each district is approaching this slightly differently based on their facilities. So, for our outdoor athletic activities at the varsity level, we are going to go with the two lanyards for our varsity students, and we're going to support particularly the senior parents. I actually, actually, you know what, I should probably stop, because I don't have my notes in front of me, and I need to go back and get this all right. But, but we are going to support our students. Now, there will be districts that will not allow visiting team parents to come in, and we're going to have to work through the league around each of these, and again, that's no, it's just the circumstances that we're working on. Conditions will be slightly different for indoor, for volleyball, for example, just because of the space issues, and, you know, there is differences between the Ward gym area and the Fairfield Lowlow gym area, so we'll be getting that information out.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Anything else to report?
That is all I have.
Okay, moving on to committee and liaison reports. Mr. Peterson?
I just wanted to report, last week, we went to the Board of Finance Quarterly Review virtual meeting. Ms. Vittali was with us, as well as Mr. Cummings and Ms. Muncell, going over the numbers for the last fiscal year was the purpose on the agenda there, but obviously, there was a great deal of interest in our early estimates of COVID expenses for this school year. We had a pretty raw discussion about, mirrored in a lot of ways, the discussions that we had here, Board of Finance asked a lot of questions about what sort of expenses were already fixed, what ones could change, you know, staffing, how that might be impacted by the models. As I mentioned earlier, Ms. Cummings did discuss some areas such as the technology spend, which could be coming, coming down the pike. One of the things that we discussed but didn't adjudicate at that meeting was this additional $300,000 that was an overage from last year, but did not make it into the non-lapsing account. Chairman Brown did not want to address that at the quarterly review meeting, but said that that could come up as an agenda item in one of their regular meetings to come. And I, you know, I think that the main point that we ended up that meeting with was trying to keep the lines of communication open between our board and theirs, understanding that some of these expenses could be variable and could be rising, and that if we just are open about it, then try to avoid surprises going forward, that would benefit everybody.
Ms. Jacobson?
So, there may be another education committee meeting at the state level with the commissioner shortly, I'm hearing, so I'm happy to, I'll definitely let you guys all know when that is going to be, as soon as I see an agenda on it, but also just if there's anything that any of you personally, or as a group, that we want asked at that meeting, or inquired about, let me know, or just know that as soon as you get notice that it's happening, that you could reach out to the state reps, obviously, who sit on the committee, for that meeting. I just think at this point, we're facing so many things that we should be, I think, in my opinion, leveraging state at this point and sharing what we expect help with.
Ms. Maxicanelli?
I actually had a follow-up question to, through the chair, Mr. Peterson. In the vein and in the tone of improved communication, has there ever been discussion with the Board of Finance about appointing a liaison to our meetings when we are, I mean, most particularly when we're having our quarterly review led by Ms. Muncell here, that they could have a report back on, and that maybe that bit of communication could be helpful?
You may or may not recall that at one of our town hall meetings last year, I proposed that exact idea. I have not had a formal discussion with anyone on the Board of Finance about it, but I think it's a fantastic idea.
Ms. Rattley?
Just another reminder that SEPT is having their first meeting next Wednesday at 7:30. You can join and become a member, which would be great for all of you guys to do, fairfieldsseptah.org, follow the links for membership, you can get your Zoom link for the meeting, which will be meet and hear from all of our Fairfield Public Schools sped coordinators. It's one of our most well-attended meetings, and it's a very popular meeting, so I encourage everybody to come.
Thank you. Anybody else? Just Roger Sherman Building Committee, I was, didn't have a meeting conflict, so I was able to call in. They're wrapping up, there's air conditioning running, they're not on the building monitoring system yet, there's local control of the units, but every room, I think, except the LMC, but they're going through their punch list, so that's, that's good news. Okay, moving on, open board comment? Seeing none. Public comment, just again, members of the public, if you would like to leave comment on any agenda items from tonight, please go to the public comment forum on our website, or publiccomment@fairfieldschools.org, and your comments on agenda items will be included with the meeting minutes. And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Lieber, all in favor, motion carries, nine zero. Thank you, everybody, have a good night.